Good evening and welcome to the March 16, 2015 Long Meadow Select Board meeting. We'll start with our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I imagine some of you have noticed there's still given them on a coughing taking place at the table up here and we're still nursing these colds, whatever they are. I was reminded tonight to let everyone know that we are now streaming live and we also are being broadcast on HD. The channel for HD in Long Meadow is Channel 809. I repeat, it's Channel 809. Tonight we have a pretty full agenda. We're going to be going over the entire budget and warrant and we also have tonight Senator Lesser is in to talk with us and Representative Brian Ash is in to speak with us. So we're going to do some quarterly, some interviews real quick and get them out of the way and then we'll turn the table over to the representative and Senator. We're going to start resident comments. Jerry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. First, I'm delighted to see not only our state senator and state rep are here and it's good to have them here with us. I had some comments made for this meeting, but I think I will save them for the, I think our next meeting will be involving the school committee. But I would like to invite all of the attendees here, and I know the select board has invited, and all those that are watching us on high-definition television with LCTV. And we are, by the way, the only one in New England with a cable access TV that is broadcasting in hi-def. I want you to know that. But I would like to invite all listeners to a Medal of Honor ceremony, which will be on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, commemorating the event that occurred on the Siegfried Line in 1945, that Ed Wilkin won the, by giving up his life, won the Medal of Honor and is actually in the Long Meadow Cemetery. We're going to have a ceremony at 11:30 a.m. on Wednesday morning. All are welcome. We're going to be at the Buxton Room at the first church and it's just a brief short walk between, you know, the Buxton Room and where he is in the cemetery in Long Meadow. So I encourage all of you to attend if you can and it's the 70th anniversary. We are trying to locate some of the perhaps folks that might be, you know, related to and have not been able to do that just yet, but we're still working on it. In our last event many, many years ago, as I recall, maybe some of you might recall, that we did have a ceremony for the Medal of Honor winner and there were some former relatives that attended. And we're trying to track them down to see if they might join us. So all of you are welcome to attend and I hope you will. It's quite, you know, quite an honor and he is in our cemetery, just a short distance from the back of the White Church, the first church in Long Meadow. And I hope you attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
(inaudible)
I'm sorry?
What was the date of the event?
The date of the event is this coming Wednesday, the 18th. I believe it's the 18th at 11:30 in White Church. And the Buxton Room will start from there. And he gave up his life in 1945 at the Siegfried Line, so we need to, we need to respect that and honor that and we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. I wanted to mention one thing you'd mentioned on the meeting with the schools before I forget. We do have a meeting in two more days on the 18th with the school committee. It's going to come before the board with a SOI, Statement of Interest, for Williamson Glenbrook School.
Right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some prepared, you know, some prepared statements, but I think I'll wait till the 18th. I know you've got a busy schedule tonight. And some of the comments relate to, I think, an article that appeared in a reminder recently. And at the risk of making a lot of enemies out of the school committee, as a town payer, a town resident, and as a taxpayer, I think we need to address some of those issues and I'll be happy to do that then. Thank you.
Okay, good, Jerry. Yeah, I just mentioned to make sure I didn't forget it because we've got a pretty full agenda tonight. I want to make sure we mention that. Thanks, Jerry. Any other resident comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, I'm here for one primary reason. Later this evening, you are going to have the opportunity to engage two of the most wonderful park and recreation commissioners Long Meadow has. They are James Jones and David Horowitz. I've had the opportunity as chairman of the Park Board over these past three years to observe both of these men in action and I'm here to tell you tonight, they are an asset to this town and I would respectfully ask that you return them for another three-year term. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. For the record, that was Jim Russell. Okay. Any other resident comments? Excuse me, select board comments?
I just wanted to see if we could put Quintetuck Road back on the agenda soon. I know that they're, we put the signs out. I think there's been some reaction to it in the community, both pro and con, and I think we should look at it sooner rather than later to assess whether it's doing what we intended it to do.
Okay. Do we, do we have the traffic committee going on that too, Steve?
They should have done. The radar trailer was supposed to come Friday to do some counts and we didn't meet on it and kind of do what we said we were going to do, which is analyze the problem in the context of the traffic policy that was approved by the board. I have not confirmed that those counts were done on Friday, but I think that's what we'll do.
Okay, yeah, we'll get it on, Alex. I've got it on my long list anyway. We were trying to get through the budget process.
Right, no, I understand.
Any other select board comments?
Marcy?
Yes?
I'm sure, but I think it would be a good time to just tell the board where we are on the Joint Transportation Committee and we have been attending those meetings like we had talked about with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And then I had a meeting today with the chair and also Gary Rue on the transportation. And I think one of the concerns we have is that the viaduct project is coming on board and there hasn't been too much really community involvement on what's going to happen once those exits are shut down and what's going to happen to Long Meadow and other surrounding communities. And I think that the town manager's done a fabulous job and that he was there at one of the meetings they did have several months ago and was able to get Long Meadow curb part of the viaduct long-term plan that was not on there. But we still have to look at what we're going to be doing in the way of traffic. And I think that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission said we need to hear a little bit more from Boston and Mass DOT in coming out and getting involved with some regional planning and that, you know, would be important to have these communities part of the voice on what we're going to be doing in mitigating the issue and also making decisions on long-term traffic patterns and also alternative transit such as biking, walking paths, and express buses. So it was very interesting what the chair and I had.
Yeah, it was a good meeting. It did pinpoint something that I was not exactly thrilled with, that the fact that we're really not at the table as often as we need to be at the table representing the town of Long Meadow. And even Pioneer Valley Planning Commission felt that a lot of times they weren't at the table, at the proper chair. So it looks like there's a lot of room for growth in the regional transportation effort and especially even for the town of Long Meadow to make sure our point is noted. Yes, Steve?
Just because the legislators are here, I did reach out to their offices and they've been very helpful in helping ensure that Long Meadow has to see the table for that very reason, so it's something we can, I'm sure they can address when they give their remarks.
Okay, good. Thank you, Marcy, for bringing that up. Any other select board comments? Before we get on to talking with the representative and our senator, we've got three committee interviews we're going to do tonight. Paul brought up a point that we're going to go ahead with the interviews even though the Parks and Rec positions don't seem to expire until June, but we don't have time to work out the details, so we'll just go through the interview process anyway so that we're one-up on everyone. And I guess we'll start with Dave.
Good evening, Dave Florida. It's 18th Circle Road.
And you're going for the two, the three-year positions?
Yeah, re-up. Been serving for almost three years, Vice Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. I'd like to spend another three years. I've learned a lot these past three. When I sat with you three years ago, I talked about bringing efficiency to the community in terms of the Park and Rec and I think we've done that. We've moved that forward and I hope I have an opportunity to continue moving it forward.
Comments to the board? Marcy?
Actually, I have a question and thank you very much for your service. Do you have any long-term goals on where you would like Parks and Rec to be, maybe five or 10 years? Because this board's really been talking about trying to get long-term goals on the table.
Sure. One of our initiatives is basically a wish list. Barry Jarvis has been great helping us kind of formulate where we've been and where we can go in the future. We've worked closely with CPC on a few projects, obviously. We've got a wish list and a want list. We've begun to prioritize it. That's going to take a little more effort, but I anticipate this year having that finalized, so to speak, so we have more of a vision of what that will look like.
Well, we'd love to see it when it's completed. Thank you.
Hi, Dave. One of the comments I've heard for years and years and years is dog park, dog park, dog park. Where does Dog Park stand? How's it going to get moved forward?
That's the same question you asked me three years ago and I had a lousy answer for you then. I've got a little better answer now, thanks to actually Chairman Russell, who's really championing the Dog Park idea, at least evaluating it. He spends time in the East Long Meadow facility and frankly, there's some challenges there. I mean, finding that space is a challenge. Putting it somewhere where it's located centrally, where folks can reach it, it's a challenge. It's on our wish list. I don't know if it's going to bubble to the top. I don't want to speak for the board, but it's something we've talked about. It's something that he's passionate about and I'm sure it's going to come up again. How was that for a non-answer?
As good as it can probably get.
There you go.
Are you getting any data floating in, any trend analysis on where we're going five years on recreational needs?
Trend analysis. I guess we look year to year and quarter to quarter, basically. I mean, we get a monthly update on the financials, how Park and Rec is doing. We've got a lot of data compiled, but I don't think we've really fine-tuned it to look forward. So the short answer is no, but definitely on the agenda.
Okay. And then the other ones?
So one of the things that we've heard about is how much competition there is for field space and I assume that's something you guys have looked at as well. And how, could you describe how tight we are for field space?
We're not as tight as you'd think.
Okay.
There's much economy in terms of efficiency. We've already seen just modifying simple scheduling, doing a little better job of sharing and communicating. It's gone a long way. We're not as tight as we once thought we were.
Okay.
I will point out, though, moving from the fields inside the buildings, a bigger challenge we have is the programs that have to happen in the schools. I think communicating on that type of endeavor is probably going to really reap some benefit moving forward. The schools get a lot of use and there's costs associated with that use and we understand that. Somebody's got to bear that cost and we constantly hear mostly good, frankly, but definitely some concerns about shared time. So that's probably where we have to focus our attention next. In terms of, I think we're doing a pretty good job of working the schedules and it hasn't been as much of an issue as I thought it was three years ago when I sat with you.
So just to follow up on that, I mean, if we were to lose one, two, three fields, how severe would that be?
It really has to be looked at on a sport-by-sport basis and a season-by-season basis, frankly. You'll notice some changes that happened at Wolf Swamp, for instance, where the data just didn't support having backstops that were needed for lacrosse or for soccer when we made that change.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been tremendous. So it's got to be on a season-by-season, sport-by-sport basis and it really is dependent on where we're talking about losses.
Okay. That it? Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
We'll make a determination in a couple of weeks and we'll make the announcements at our meeting.
Great, thank you.
Actually, I think, I think we just need to be clear that the position's out up until June 30th.
Right, yeah.
And I don't think the public had a chance to apply for the position, so we're going to be voting in two weeks.
Right. Okay, well, we're undetermined what our action will be. We'll just do the interviews and still scratch everything else I said. James?
Jim Jones, 120 Bel Air Drive. I've been on the board for three years now. I've been their CPC representative for the past three years, which has been an eye-opener. I've had a lot of fun, a lot of interesting back and forth, meeting with the town, with the town manager, et cetera, et cetera. It's been very, very helpful. I learned a lot. And I'm not going to be here 10 to 15 years, so no reason to answer me.
Any questions from select?
Again, the same question I posed to Mr. Horowitz. Again, how tight do you think we are on field space?
Well, I'm going to give the same answer. It depends upon what, what's going to happen to different organizations in the town, where are they going to end up being, which may hamper some of our fields. You know, that depends upon like DPW, COA, so on and so forth.
Right.
Where are they going to be?
Right. I mean, that's sort of the thrust of my question is, you know, if we were to lose one, two, three, four fields, where does that put us?
Right. To be honest, I'm more of a pessimist than David is.
Okay.
I think it would hurt us quite a bit in doing that because we have quite a big program now, just cutting down some fields, the kids that have to go to other places.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Marcy.
Just want to thank you and especially being on the two committees, the community preservation and on Parks and Rec.
A lot of meetings.
It's a lot of meetings and it also helps coordinate those projects going down, you know, through the CPA as well as through capital planning. So thank you for helping with all that.
My pleasure.
You ready, Paul? No? Paul? Thank you, James.
Thank you.
That concludes our interviews tonight. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. John?
That's because you're playing with Mr. Ash. That's what the question is. B-I-E-S.
B-R-I?
B-I-E-S-N-A-H-A-N.
Okay, John, and you are going for a one-three-year term?
Correct, on the CPC, Mr. Chairman.
CPC.
Yes.
And you've introduced yourself and you're going for the Conservation Commission?
No, I am on the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, you're going again for it, aren't you?
No.
Oh, excuse me, I'm really a mess tonight.
That's okay.
So you're going for Community Preservation. Why?
Correct. You know, with conservation, I've been on conservation now for 16 or 17 years. So working with CPC would give me an opportunity to work with other boards and committees within the town and implement some of the products that come through there. So I feel that'd be exciting service.
John, do you perceive of a possible conflict between the direction of a Conservation Commission and the direction of Community Preservation and you want to spend money, do some things in the Conservation Commission? You know, and how would you resolve those two, given your responsibility to both committees?
No, I don't feel it's a conflict of interest. I feel that it complements, as CPC, one of their major or one of their tenants is preservation of open space. And as we don't really appropriate money, but actually recommend a town meeting, I feel that it would not be a conflict of interest and actually be a benefit, knowing the conservation lands and what's needed in town for more open space.
Marcy?
Thank you for willing to go on more meetings.
Anybody on your side?
We're going to take this up a little bit later. There was a $50,000 warrant article for getting rid of invasive plants.
Correct.
I don't know what, do you know how big an area that's going to? It was kind of an unusual thing. I'd never seen anything quite like that before.
It's important, especially for the meadows and the conservation areas down there and you understand the invasive plants that are coming in, why that's being used. It would...
You tell me.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
As invasive plants come in, they outcompete the native populations down there, whether it's plant species or animal species, and then we lose our biodiversity, our own natural diversity. So having a program as submitted to town warrants would help remove some of those invasive plants down there and help maintain our biodiversity. Without that, and actually this is going to be good because as concurrent, as you may know, Fannie Stebbin will be going over to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, which will also have an invasive species control program. So this would complement on our lands what they plan to implement on their lands down there. So the total acreage, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but it'd be a significant portion of that, of our lands down there.
Okay, John, if I have this straight, you're not in this position, so this is a new position and it's only open until June of this year, so if we put you in this position, you'll have to reapply in June.
Correct. That's how I'm picking up the tidbits tonight, correct?
Yeah, this is, this one, the confusing appointments tonight.
Can I ask how that process would work? So if appointed...
We'll make an announcement in two weeks from now.
And then I immediately reapply for the June 30th position?
As soon as it comes out. Debbie will put the paperwork back out.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All set?
Yeah, thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you.
Boy, that was painful. On me. Okay, next item up is we have our representative and our senator. Both of the offices of Representative Ash and Senator Lesser reached out to us and the select board and asked to come in and have a meeting with the board to open a newer and fresher dialogue. And of course, we welcome the opportunity to have this meeting with them. I also must add that this week I did have a conference call with Senator Lesser on Friday, I believe it was, and we talked about FY16 needs, funding needs, and I was, I had information from many of the board members. I shared as much as he would allow me to share in the time period that we had on the phone. I would have liked to have had him at the House personally, so he couldn't have escaped, but we did have a good dialogue and I think he's fully aware of how many needs are our, the awareness in our community. So gentlemen, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you. First, I want to, you know, as a former select board member, I have to say you've really upped your game with the cushion chairs. I like that. And I want to welcome my friend and colleague, Senator Lesser. I think I've been here every year since being elected into the House and I appreciate and sometimes sympathize with the work that you have to do. It's a thankless and very difficult, necessary job and I'm very happy personally, as well as for the town of Long Meadow, that we have Eric as our senator now. I think it's going to do us a lot of good, both in our own community as well as the surrounding community. So if you want to introduce yourself, Senator?
Well, just want to introduce myself. I know each of you, but I'll, I guess for the record, I'll introduce myself as Senator Eric Lesser. And I just wanted to also thank my now colleague, Representative Ash, who's been a great mentor to me and I worked with him a bit when he was on the select board. And, you know, I just wanted to quickly say, and I represent, of course, nine cities and towns in the area, in Hampden County and Hampshire County, but I come to you in a unique role as both, as both your senator, but also as a constituent and a resident of Long Meadow. So, you know, I have a dual interest here as not just the representative or the senator for the area, but also as a citizen in the town. So I just wanted to also thank each of you for the work you do because I can appreciate, as Brian said, it's often very thankless and can come with all kinds of controversies and headaches, but it's very, very important. So I'm mainly here just to listen. I didn't come with any specific things to present on or any, or any specific items to discuss. I'm happy to just discuss whatever you want to talk about or that Representative Ash wants to talk about. And, you know, the other thing I will say is I just, I consider this an introduction, you know, about two and a half months into the job, so, you know, I consider this the first of, you know, many engagements we'll have. I'm happy to come anytime. I live about 1,100 feet from here, so, you know, so this is the beginning, so it'll be the start of opening up a dialogue and with that, I will stop talking and...
I think the chairman's going to show up at your house.
Yeah. Eleven hundred foot, we're just real radiant. Might be a little far.
We can finish our discussion. Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for the introduction. We'll go ahead and open up the board members. Alex?
Yeah, one of the things that I've been thinking about lately is the Boston Olympics. And of course, we're kind of a long ways out here. You guys are in there, you know, talking to people like Senator Rosenberg and the, you know, House Leader. And I guess, you know, I've heard different things, somewhat cryptic, from the House and Senate leadership. I'm not really sure where you all stand on it. Could you just sort of tell us what you think?
I mean, it's extremely intriguing and an honor that they're considering Boston and Massachusetts for the 2024 Olympics, but I think it's almost too, a little premature to say whether or not we think it's going to be a positive thing for the Commonwealth if we do indeed get it. There's a lot of ramifications that come with it, as I'm sure you know, and, you know, what it means to Western Mass, that's more of our concern, what it means to Long Meadow, the greater Springfield area, what it means economically. Is it a surge? I know they did talk about if the Summer Olympics do come out to Boston, having events out here, which is a great thing, but, you know, as our transportation out in Western Mass is much different than Eastern Mass, it would be a major burden. So we have to weigh that out, I think, before we make any decisions personally as well as professionally, whether it's a positive thing for the Commonwealth. I mean, just thinking about it, it sounds like a great thing to have the Olympics here and, you know, I'd be honored if, you know, Boston had it, but we just want to make sure that it's not going to have any long-term negative ramifications for the, for Western Mass and the Commonwealth in general.
And let me just ask a follow-up and maybe, then I'll stop talking about the Olympics. Are you all in favor of, because I think Senator Rosenberg talked about this yesterday, of the state money going toward it? And of course, there's sort of two components of state money. One is whether state money for infrastructure or state money for other things relating to the Olympics. Have you guys thought about that?
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in. So a couple of things on the Olympics. First is for this legislative session, I was appointed Chair of the Senate Committee on Tourism, Arts and Cultural Affairs. So one of the reasons for that appointment was making sure that there was a Western Mass voice in the tourism conversations that happen in the state and that obviously has overlapped with the Olympics. So our committee, the House, our House counterparts were just named. So my House counterpart is Corey Atkins from Concord. So we're actually meeting this week and we're going to get started on a hearing schedule and the plan for diving into the Olympics. So that'll definitely be a component. The short answer right now is we don't really have a lot of answers because it's still very preliminary, but I will share my kind of general thinking of how I'm going to approach it. You know, I like the aspirational element to the Olympic bid and I like the idea that it's very forward-looking and it positions Massachusetts in a kind of very ambitious way. I don't like the track record of Olympics that have really been hosted ever, anywhere, and that really makes me very cautious about moving forward. So to follow up on the specific comments about President Rosenberg, I share his feeling that...
that state money should not go to projects that wouldn't be of general public benefit anyway. So for example, if we can get, you know, a high-speed East-West Rail program out of the Olympics that has staying power long past when the, you know, village gets closed up and the stadium gets locked up, I would be open to that, and that might be a bargain worth engaging in. If the plan, as they start to put it forward, looks like it's paying for a lot of white elephants in, you know, in the Boston area and is basically going to, you know, a vanity project for the city of Boston, then that's not something I would support. We just don't have enough details yet. The other element, you know, for all of us to kind of pay some attention to on the Olympics is there very likely will be a statewide ballot initiative, or at least there's an effort to put one up.
Right.
And that will change the dynamic pretty significantly. So we have to see how that, that moves forward and what the process is on that, because if that ballot initiative ends up getting put up, that's going to change, that'll change pretty significantly the calculus. Because, for example, that ballot initiative might ban, you know, public money being used. So we have to look at it. And then the final, just sort of logistical thing is we're going to be bringing the Boston 2024 group out to Springfield soon. The date isn't nailed down yet, but it's going to be in the spring, so it's coming up. And we'll, we're working on that in the Tourism Committee with some of the, you know, people here. So we'll let, we'll get that out to everyone. And I would encourage, you know, maybe a representative from the board or someone to come to that, because we'll have the leaders of Boston 2024 there. And it's a little bit of a two-way. We're going to kind of question them on what their plans are, and we're also going to try to kind of sell the attributes of Western Mass for some events like whitewater rafting, cycling, you know, potentially some of the basketball qualifying elements, things like that.
Mark?
Thank you both for being here. We do need to increase our dialogues, I think. One of that, and some of the issues that I'm most interested in how they affect town Long Meadow, I think our chairman probably spoke to you about Senator Lesser, but I just want to get and put on the table a couple of things that primarily economic that we need the most help with, and there's legislative help. And I know you know where these is probably going, and that has to do with pension reform, OPEB reform, just as we, and maybe a second round of healthcare reform for state employees. And so I just wanted to get a sense of your thought process on getting that up into the, you know, the discussion or beyond discussion, the action steps in the state legislature. The problems that are associated with particularly OPEB and pension liabilities aren't something that the town of Long Meadow or any towns or cities in Massachusetts can over, you know, can handle on their own. They do need state legislative assistance, so.
Since I've been in the legislature, the Speaker DeLeo has taken an active role in not only reform, but doing whatever he can in those areas. And I know it's the House commitment to continue moving along. Just like in town politics and state politics, sometimes it goes a lot slower than we would like it to, because there's a lot of moving parts. Every two years, we get a lot of new people come in, and the temperature shifts. But we have started probably six years ago, you know, with pension reform, continue moving along, and the Speaker's already made a commitment to make sure we keep moving in that direction. I can't speak for President DeLeo, Senate President, I mean, Senate President Rosenberg, but my guess is that his priorities lie along the same, same way with the Speaker.
So it's, it's obviously a very thorny issue. I think a consensus has begun to emerge that the sort of status quo we're on isn't sustainable for anyone. And I think if you look at the budget proposal that Governor Baker put forward, you know, just two weeks ago, and that now the House is going to, is going to examine, and then it'll come to the Senate. But, you know, he does, he does make some incremental proposals for adjusting it. A couple of examples, you know, changing some of the eligibility criteria around mass health, which I know is a little bit of a separate issue than pension reform and employee retirement benefits, but it's part of the same problem, which is skyrocketing healthcare costs and sort of legacy commitments that government makes. So we should, we'll see where that develops. We're actually lucky that my colleague in the Senate, who is from West Springfield, so Western Mass person, who Brian and I both, Representative Ash and I both work closely with, is Jim Welch, who's the Chair of the Healthcare Financing Committee in the Senate. So he's going to be working really closely on the healthcare, on the healthcare piece. The other thing is, is I think that there is going to probably be some type of pretty comprehensive reform package of the MBTA that's going to be proposed. I mean, you know, certainly the Speaker has talked about this publicly, the governor has talked about it, the Senate President has talked about it. And I think inherent in any proposal that's going to get put forward on reform in the MBTA is going to be some of these pension and sort of legacy, you know, entitlement commitments. So we should see where that is, because that's going to be a framework, I think, for potentially the prism that we look at all the other public employee retirement programs. So I know that's not an answer with the level of specificity that you're probably looking for, but I think it's mainly a, you know, I think the point I'm just trying to get across is that in this legislative session, which is just beginning and is two years long, I do think a consensus is emerging that some, something has to happen on sort of, you know, legacy retire, retirement costs and the sort of structural problems it's causing in the state deficit. I think you're going to probably see the first action around mass health and around, and around the MBTA. And so that might create a little bit of a framework for us to approach the other, you know, the teachers, firefighters, police, other public employees, so.
And separate, but somewhere along those lines, the governor's also proposed an early retirement, which hasn't been done in some years, to hope alleviate some of the budget woes right now. I'm sure most of you-
See, but early retirement on a town level, actually, it actually exacerbates the problem and makes it worse, because we've got 50-year-olds going out with full medical benefits.
I know.
And then we've got the replacements who we're paying medical benefits for. So, you know, watch out what you ask, watch out what you ask for, you might just get it, kind of thing.
But then more on the state level, offering early retirement to try to cut into it. I mean, most people know it's a billion and a half deficit coming in. The governor's budget was aggressive. Now, as Senator Lesser mentioned, the budget, House one, comes from the governor, is now in the Chairman of Ways and Means, their committee. They're going over it, and over the next month, the House will take it up, will come up with their own budget, send it to the Senate, they'll come up with their budget, and then we'll have a finalized version that the Conference Committee will go over. So somewhere in there, and I think there's been a commitment on all levels to restore local aid, which obviously is not only our personal priorities, but both the House, the Senate, and the governor has mentioned that, which is, that's a positive thing for Long Meadow.
Thank you. I have two follows. The first one is on the same question, which is, you know, if either of you want to have a, I'd love to have a discussion about pension reform, having lived through private company pension reform several times in my life. And by the way, there was a speaker from MIT at the Mass Municipal Association who had some brilliant opportunities and suggestions on how to make a statewide employee pension reform. I think people ought to start listening to people like that, really know what they're talking about. My other, my next question for you folks, though, is more of a personal one, and that really is, especially you, Senator Lesser, relatively new in the, in the position, you know, Representative Ash, you've been here a while, but you're going to start hearing-
Not that long.
My, my concern is, you're going to start getting a lot of potential requests from people, whether it be in the town of Long Meadow or your district. And how are you going to go about identifying the difference between special interest requests or requests that truly have consensus or majority support for things that, you know, we'd like the state legislature to do this, and we, and when, when in fact, it may not be the town of Long Meadow or consensus speaking, but a group of special interest people speaking? And I'd like to know how you're going to go about separating that and going to get consensus from the leaders in the town.
That's a great, great question. And, you know, I think it begins with having an active dialogue. You know, one of the first things I did after getting sworn in was reach out to all the Select Boards, school committees, elected officials in my district. I mean, as I mentioned, nine cities and towns, two cities with a mayor and a full city council and executive departments, and then, and then, you know, the rest are towns. So, you know, I think one element is just keeping active dialogue open and keeping engagements. And, you know, we could potentially set up a regular or quasi-regular system for me coming before the board. I'm happy to do that. And, and I think also an important element of that is running proposals by each other. I've been pretty public about, and I've made an important effort to be public about the legislation I'm sponsoring and co-sponsoring. It's available on my website. It's listed right there. The four measures that I've, you know, really championed fall into three, three key areas that I'm trying to focus on, which I do think are broad in their scope, and focus on the public as a whole rather than individual interests. And that falls around tackling substance abuse and the opiate epidemic, which is a very serious problem, of course, in Long Meadow, but in all the communities that I represent. The other big category is promoting more high-tech job growth, particularly around high-tech manufacturing, which is another, you know, broad strength we have in the economy around here. And then the final piece is on transportation issues. And I've talked, you know, East-West Rail has potentially probably gotten the most attention, but broadly, transportation finance issues, that includes roads, bridges, you know, a plan on sustainable funding of transportation. And I've learned in the job, even though I've only been, I've been in less than three months, but I've learned quickly in the job that you do get bombarded by a lot of people who kind of want something. And we have a process and luckily, a great team. And we have a kind of internal process that we go through where we try to find out all the facts. I usually try to look up, well, what other legislators have worked on this given issue before, reach out to them. You know, Representative Ash and I are already working together on the, on the rail piece and on several other elements. And then I, you know, usually try to engage the stakeholders in any given issue. So if it's a community issue, if it's something having to do with, with the town, I would go to the relevant Select Boards or the relevant local elected officials. If it's an issue having to do with substance abuse, where we have a meeting on Wednesday at Mercy with their entire, you know, addiction, team of addiction experts. So, you know, I think it's, it's, it's a sort of iterative process of engagements and learning, you know, learning from the relevant stakeholders, the relevant people who know the information. Because at the end of the day, my role is really as an advocate for, for concerns and issues that get brought to me. You know, it's, you know, I'm, my, our effectiveness as legislators is dependent on the communities we're representing, we represent being organized and engaged in the process with us. I mean, you've been in it much longer than I, you can chime in.
Mark, I just say, if we cave to special interests in any issue, I don't think we'd last long in the legislature, because I think people are too intelligent watching to know what's going on. And if they see you caving to one group or another, and you're not being true to what's good for your community, what's good for your district or Western Mass, I think people could see right through that, and you'd get the covers pulled off pretty quick on you.
Thank you, both.
Marie?
Hi. I'm sure you've heard this fact, that Long Meadow has the highest tax rate in the Commonwealth. And we have a lot of needs that are coming up, but we're also coming up against the $25 levy limit. And I'm not saying next year or the year after, but we have to start planning for that. And so what we're looking for are various things you can put through the legislature to help us, whether it's local option taxes. The meals taxes really helped us. And I know we passed some of those ideas on to you. Also, the Chapter 90 formula, it's really outdated. I know last year, you guys looked at the Chapter 70 formula, but one of the things I heard when I went to the legislative symposium is that a lot of out in Western Mass, they don't consider the seasonal traffic, they don't consider cut-through traffic, and so we're really being underfunded when it comes to the Chapter 90 formula. We'd like you to really look at it and consider what, what's happening to your towns out here in Western Mass. The other thing is going what Mark was saying, the pension. I mean, we have real pension problems out here. We're looking at not being funded to 2036. I expect us to really be getting some really charges that will start eating up our budget in the next few years. So I know you've been looking at it a long time, but I'd like you to really push that at the front of the agenda, because it is going to be a serious problem. Now, I know that the legislature went in, they took care of a lot of the healthcare issues for us, and they really gave some pressure off of that, but the pension's really pushing up against our budget, and it's going to be a big problem. And last year, you did something great, which was the specialty loans, well, yeah, the specialty loans for the water projects. But we need you to consider the sewer projects. We have something sitting out, I think we were, we were told it was in 20 years, but it's like a $20 million project. And all of us along the Connecticut River, we have these single sewage treatment plants right there in the floodplains. And this is something that all the towns in Western Mass are going to have to look at. So if you did it for the clean water, I think it might not be as glamorous, but you really need to look at our sewage infrastructure needs coming forward. So that is probably, I just mentioned, huge amounts of legislation, but please consider all of this at the same time.
Yeah, Marie, those are all obviously extremely important issues and things that we are willing to tackle. Chapter 90, we've already brought up. Hopefully, it'll get done this session. As you know, Western Mass, we're in the minority with legislature, legislators, so we have to band together to get the most power. The good thing, you know, living here, we understand, you know, it's not just that we, we're the rep in the Senate for the area, we live here, we understand what the burdens are of this community. And, you know, we champion it as much as you would like, and we'll continue to push on all those issues. As you mentioned, we get a lot of stuff done, but there's still, we know there's a long way to go, and there'll be more things that come up along the way. But we will continue to work on all those, and that's why a meeting like this is so important, to keep that open dialogue, to let us know what's going on in the town of Long Meadow that we can have an impact on. We might be able, not be able to take care of it in this budget session in the next six months a year, but if we start the ball rolling and get the Western Mass delegation together, it's something hopefully we can get done over the next year, two years, three years.
Yeah, that was, that was very helpful. I mean, I was, you know, aware, kind of in the abstract about the tax levy issues, but hopefully hear that firsthand. And I, and I wasn't aware about the sewage infrastructure. I mean, that, that's important. Yeah, that's not glamorous. So, yeah, maybe after this, we can find out a little bit more about what specifically, you know, we can do. But, but that's helpful feedback, so I'll bring that back.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, how are you?
I've got the simple question, since you've been on the board, and Brian, you've been in office for a while, and Eric, you grew up here, you've, you know the town pretty well. What are you guys going to do for Long Meadow? What's on the agenda that you think that you can bring forward, besides the big elephants of pension reform, which you know, obviously not going to affect in the-
Probably one of the things, like Marie was saying, like Chapter 90, we've already addressed Chapter 70. Those are the only type of things we can have a direct impact, besides grants, which, you know, we currently already do, whether it's police fire grants or other grants for the community. But things that can have an immediate impact, and how Long Meadow, as well as other communities in this area, sometimes are unfairly looked at when they do the formula. And I think a lot of people outside of the area look at Long Meadow as a wealthy town. They don't realize that the town itself isn't any more wealthy than any other community, but it's got a stigma because of the, you know, some of the incomes in town push it up. So I think we need to adjust the formula for our schools, for our roadways, to make sure that we're getting a fair piece of the pie, not just in Western Mass, but in Long Meadow. Because I think Long Meadow, sometimes we get even the shorter end of the stick than Western Mass as a whole. So it's probably one of the biggest things that we can do is keep pushing that forward, making sure that they understand that, you know, these formulas don't make sense for every community. Some communities, they're great for, and they really, they really help mount for Long Meadow. We don't always get what we really need.
I really like that question. And without getting too philosophical, I mean, I, you know, now having just started in all this, I kind of ask myself aversions of that all the time. And, you know, I think to sort of answer it fully, I guess I would kind of, the job is really kind of two jobs, as I see it. And, you know, Representative Ash, chime in if I'm mischaracterizing it. But, you know, I really see it as two jobs. You know, one is as a legislator, and that's a largely kind of Boston-based job, where you're working with colleagues, you're doing committee work, you're trying to draft legislation. And that certainly has the potential to bring back direct benefits to Long Meadow. But as you sort of alluded to in the question, those, that work is often more broad in its scope and is directed more at the Commonwealth as a whole, with of course, the particular needs of our district front and center, helping get grants for schools, for the community, for the fire department, et cetera. But it's part of a process that engages the whole state, because by definition, the legislators you're working with are from every part of the state. And I think that's a very important part of the job. The second part of the job is in your community, it is in your district, and for me, is in Long Meadow, the town I grew up in. And that's really a job as a, I view it as a kind of community leader and a community organizer function. So I guess I would answer your question on two levels. One, I would say, on a sort of legislative side, it's working through the legislative process to make sure that we're getting- process to make sure that we're getting the due that we deserve. And that includes adjustments where necessary to the Chapter 90 formula, which I didn't fully understand that actually until Mr. Foster explained that to me over the phone about just how distorted that is for a community like Long Meadow. So working, you know, through the legislative process to change that, working through the appropriations process to bring some more money, maybe for a park project, or for, you know, a new ambulance, or whatever the particular need might be that year. So that, that's a big part of it, and that's what I'll focus on. And then the second part is a little bit softer, but I'm learning actually, as I kind of get my handle on this, is kind of just as important. You know, for example, two weeks ago, I went and judged the, was a guest judge. I promise I was fair, but Long Meadow High School was competing in the, for the Pioneer Valley Debate League tournament.
You must have lost my phone number.
They won. So Long Meadow won, I went down, I helped judge. But, you know, that was, I thought that was, you know, in its own way, a way of kind of giving back to Long Meadow, you know, went, met with the students, we helped, you know, coach them a little bit on how to do it. And, you know, and so I view it as that kind of a role also. And when there's a thorny issue that might not have a solution in the legislature, or might not have a solution on Beacon Hill, you know, we've got a team, we've got a group of people, we've got, you know, that we work with. So let's convene a meeting, let's get the relevant stakeholders in the room, let's use some of the soft elements of the job to get some progress done. So I know that that's not necessarily the most concrete answer, but it's sort of how I've been approaching it in the last few months, yeah.
One other, and probably, actually, probably the most important component of our job is constituent services.
Right.
And that's, can be anything from somebody calling that their gas is out and they can't get through the gas company, their electricity is down, they don't have a way to get, you know, they've been calling and they've been on hold. To be able to call their representative or their senator's office, and to have somebody get through them quickly, get back so their power's up, their gas is up, whatever the situation, somebody lost their license, it's the little things like that every day that is probably the most impactful and the most important part of the job. Because there's a lot of people out there that get frustrated, and they don't know who to call, they don't know where to go, but they, somebody tells them, call your state rep, call your state senator. And we're able to get, you know, sometimes, I'm happy that I'm able to do it, but I'm also sad that sometimes people even have to call that they're not able to get through. But that's the rewarding part of the job, being able to help people out and be able to help them navigate through the muddy waters and be able to get them to the end, whether it's a paycheck, unemployment, whether it's social security, like I said, the gas, electric, whatever the issue may be. That's probably the most important day-to-day part of our job, that every day, we get phone calls or emails, people looking for assistance.
Thank you.
I guess this is maybe more for Senator Lesser, because you talked about high-speed rail, but I don't know, you were saying that maybe Brian was also talking about it. I guess one thing that I've been a little unclear about, just trying to read what you all have put out about it and what the news has talked about, is what that would really look like. I mean, I've seen high-speed rail in Europe. I mean, that, it's like a bullet train, you know? And then there's Acela, which is a little bit faster than a car. And then you've got MBTA, which is slower than a car, you know? And Ritchie Neal made a comment recently about extending rail service, which I kind, the way it sounded like, it's like sort of extending commuter rail out here. I mean, what's the vision? Is it extending commuter rail out here, or is it really high-speed rail?
Right. So, great question, and I'll take it in a couple of parts. One is, is, yeah, it's not, I mean, the sort of Barcelona to Madrid bullet train is a long way off.
That would be ideal.
Although that would be great, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a game changer.
And that might be the, that's the aspiration.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, you know, obviously, a long-term project. Rail in the range of 70 to 90 miles per hour is eminently doable. And so it's closer to the Acela model.
Right, right.
If you have, if you have a rail link between Springfield and Boston that goes 80 miles an hour, that beats cars pretty handily. And you can do other stuff while you're on the ride, you can be on your phone or whatever. So to just give people a little bit of a sense of this, I don't want to take up too much time on this, but a very, just a quick overview of where we're at. So I filed legislation to ask the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to a feasibility study on East-West Rail, in particular, the Worcester to Springfield portion. About six, seven years ago, a regular commuter rail service was opened up between Boston and Worcester. There's 14 trains a day right now, I believe, between Boston and Worcester, and it has absolutely transformed the city. I mean, I don't know anybody, if any of you have been to Worcester in the last three, four years, but you have market-rate housing, you have new developments around the Union Station. They basically did about 10 years ago what Springfield is poised to do now, renovate their Union Station, put all their transportation links under one roof, and improve their inter-city rail service. And that's what, we're a little behind them, but that's what the vision is now. So we don't have to build the rail from scratch, from Boston to Springfield. We have, the rail already exists and is up and running between Boston and Worcester. We have to do the 55 miles between Worcester and Springfield. And I would say that that 55 miles also doesn't have to be done by scratch, because there's already a rail link and the right-of-way is already done. There's two snags right now that have to get dealt with. One is that CSX owns the rights, which is a freight company, which is a thorny issue. They make a lot of money off the rights to it. The second is that in certain places, you have to do, without getting too wonky, you have to do this thing called double-tracking, so that that allows, right now, there's for most, for portions of it, there's just one track. So you'd have to add a double-track, either so you could have two trains going at the same time, or you do a situation where the train literally kind of pulls off the side, lets the other one zoom by, and then keeps going. Anyway, it's completely realistic and feasible. The three states of New York, Connecticut, and Massachusetts are involved in this 460-mile rail corridor study right now that's being funded by the federal government on doing a high-speed rail link from Montreal to New York and from Springfield to Boston, and then potentially over to Albany. So we would be doing a very small part of a much bigger study that would be done. And then the final thing I'll just say is, you know, our region became prosperous and Long Meadow became Long Meadow because Springfield was established as the crossroads of New England. This is where the Underground Railroad was located, because it was a transportation nexus. This is where George Washington put the armory. You know, this is why Westover Air Base, which at its height was the, one of the headquarters for Strategic Air Command, was put here. It is a very strategically important location. And if we want to be serious about long-term economic development, we need to reestablish that. You know, for really two generations, we've lost that nexus. And so this is part of a broader strategy, which includes establishing more north-south links, which had traditionally been, you know, one of our key economic corridors. And it's already happening. I'd actually be curious how many people know about this, but in a year and a half or so, eight trains a day are scheduled to be connecting New Haven to Hartford to Springfield, paid for by the state of Connecticut. It's not even a Massachusetts project. And then Congressman Oliver and Congressman Neal worked very hard, moved heaven and earth to basically get a north-south rail link reestablished. You used to have, the rail link used to hook out to Palmer and then reconnect back up and go north. It basically took 30, 40 minutes longer than it should have. What that project did, that was just recently completed, was straight into the rail link out, so it went straight from Springfield to Holyoke to Northampton to Greenfield and up to Connecticut. So you, in the not-too-distant future, and now, and you have the Union Station project, which is poised to be completed in the next year and a half or so. So you have a moment where if we do this right, you're reestablishing Springfield as the, both the north-south and the east-west nexus for New England. And that's very exciting. And ultimately, I think that, as important as the casino is, and I know there's been controversy around the casino, this is the real long-term development solution for our area. It's reestablishing those ties. And that's where you would see, you would see land values, property values skyrocket. And this is what the feasibility study is supposed to help us do, is put a roadmap together for how you move forward on it.
Now, I'll just say, I mean, this isn't a new thing. That real high-speed rail has been an idea when Mary Hurley was mayor. But I think they always shot for the end game, the high, high-speed rail. This is the first realistic plan that really gives it a chance of succeeding without having this multi-billion-dollar project that will never come to fruition. This is something that is real, something that can happen, should happen. As Eric said, property values in Boston, you know, are so high, that's why people started moving out further and further towards Worcester, and that made it feasible to do the rail line out here. The same thing should happen. I don't know if it'll happen as rapidly or as high as it did in Worcester, but there's no reason people can't live in the Springfield, greater Springfield area, and work in Boston, you know, if they so choose.
Thanks.
Just wanted, one thing that concerns me about the big plan that I've been following and what you've been doing, and I guess, as you said, has been worked on for several years, is that is the, we're not looking at the feeders going into it. So consider the light rail projects. We used to have, in the area, trolleys. Munson, all of these towns had trolleys going down to Springfield, and those all got ripped up. And now, we don't have any real mass transit, rail rails and other things coming from these communities to go to this Union Station. We're talking about building this great thing, but we don't have ways of getting there. So I think we need to look at a more regional plan. So consider the smaller projects too, even though the big ones are going to be important.
I think that's where the PGTA comes into place right now. I know it's not, you know, the old trolleys, I think it's much more direct right there. But PGTA does cover a lot of those areas, and I'm sure they would be more than willing to work with that, at probably a lot less of a cost than adding rails back into all those communities. It's almost a shame we did change over if, you know, we would have been up with the times now.
Yeah, that's important feedback. And, you know, one element that's inherent, that's important to the success of, you know, non-vehicle transportation, is that you do need some critical density, kind of alluding to what you're saying, because if people get off of the train, then what? And so we, you know, we have to make sure, and part of what this study will look at is what are the linkages coming in and out of Union Station? So that could potentially be trolleys, that could be increased, you know, rapid bus service, it could be any number of things. A couple of exciting things, I had a meeting a few weeks ago with some representatives from Uber who want to build up a presence of Uber in Springfield. You know, that's a kind of 21st century version of a trolley.
In case people don't know what that is.
Oh, so, do people know what Uber is? Okay.
And home, they might not, they might be watching it at home.
Uber is a, yeah.
I didn't know Eric was German.
Uber is a, it's like an online car-sharing service that allows you to call, you know, it basically allows you to call taxis and people who like, you know, want to, you know, how would you describe it? It's like a car sharing. You can, you go online and you find people who want to give you rides and...
It's like a modern-day taxi service for the independent person.
You know, so, you know, so we, you know, we're working on potentially that. You know, the other piece is Springfield is actually a city that has the density. And, oh, one other, you know, MGM is going to be doing a circulator trolley through downtown, so there'd be a component of linkaging through that. You know, the other piece I'd say is Springfield's actually a very walkable city. The problem is, is that people don't do it because there's a perception that it's not safe. You know, the Union Station to where the new MGM site is, you know, close to Red Rose, I mean, that's a very short walk, actually, if you just went and walked it. Nobody does it right now. But you see a future, not in the near, you know, not even that far away, in which that walk from the new Union Station to MGM will actually be very pleasant, because they're putting in, you know, they're making refurbishments to the quadrangle. You might have a new hotel on Court Square in downtown Springfield, you'll have a new train service.
And also the high-speed, PGTA is looking at a high-speed bus lane just dedicated for the bus, so the bus can, you know, instead of weaving in and out of traffic, that it painted a different color, dedicated just for that. So that would help along those lines as well.
Right, right. So, you know, that's just another example of why I think that this is kind of an idea whose time is calm, and the linkages are an important element of it.
Well, you can see now, after listening to the board tonight, I am set o' word. You can see now that when I talked with you, I was echoing the feelings from the board. I'm sure you've seen many subjects come up.
Yeah, absolutely.
And by the way, I, we didn't really get to finish our conversation. I have about 60 more pages.
100 feet.
And you can, you can bring a representative with you too. I'm only about 12,000 feet that way, so our house folks aren't that far apart. I don't, is there any more questions from the board? No? Personally, and myself and the board, we'd like to thank you for coming in tonight. The dialogue is nice. There's one thing I have heard, and Brian, we've always heard favorable comments about you, but I've heard very recently, several people have stated that Senator Lesser seems to be reaching out to the community with a new vibrance, and apparently, it's noticeable what you're doing.
That's nice.
I've heard that from several people, and they've been unsolicited comments. So apparently, there is a resurgence, so. And of course, we'd love to have both of you gentlemen living in our town, that makes it wonderful.
Has that ever happened before?
Not in my lifetime.
Yeah. So thank you once again from the board, and Senator Lesser, for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. And, Town Manager reports.
Just quickly, it's not, I don't know if it's in the DPW report, but COA Kitchen is coming along. I was there today. The equipment should be installed by the end of the week, the floor is down, so there'll be a forthcoming announcement, I would guess, in the next week or so, about a reopening. So it's getting very close. Unfortunately, it was delayed. We're doing a lot of the work in-house, and a lot of the guys at, you know, our Buildings Department that does the plumbing and electrical also drive plow trucks and go on roofs to remove snow from schools and that kind of thing. So we will submit a report when the project gets done and, you know, report to the board, you know, the, why we lost time, where we lost it, and why the project went beyond the deadline. I want to extend our gratitude to East Long Meadow for continuing to do our Meals on Wheels program for us. So that can, so the folks who are at home who rely on Meals on Wheels have continued to receive their crucial food. And I guess I won't extend the meeting with my report any further unless people have specific questions. Other than to say, I did reach out, and they will, I did find out from the senator's office that the contract with the vendor who's doing the VITAC project is required to reach out and cooperate with the communities, including us. So I expect, hopefully, to hear something. But when I reached out to say, can we have a seat at the table, how do we get involved, the response from the, both offices was swift and thorough, so I want to thank them for that.
Okay. Okay. Accept a motion, we'll get some minutes, get a motion to accept some minutes, the February 9th, February 17th, and March 5th?
I'll do them on my time. I make a motion to approve the February 9th, 2015 minutes.
You have a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay.
I move to approve the February 17th, 2015, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
There you go.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I move to approve the March 5th, 2015, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? None. And for the record, I have to abstain on the February 17th, I also was not here.
So it's...
On the February 17th.
3-0-2.
Mr. Santinello and I, neither of us were here.
3-0-2.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can I get, we'll get a discussion going. Can I get a motion to accept the Town Manager's 2016 Town Budget and Capital Plan as submitted? Got a...
I move to accept.
Move? You have a second?
I would say.
Okay, I'll second it, so we go into discussion. So we're now into discussion. Let the discussion begin.
Just, so I'm clear on what the motion is. When we say the Town Manager's Budget and Capital Plan, I mean, which articles in the draft warrant are we talking about?
Oh, it's the whole package.
Well, I mean, but some of the articles are, I mean...
Well, I understand. I refer to, I refer to it as his package until we, until we vote it, and then it becomes our package. So that wasn't so much of individual pieces, but generally speaking.
Okay. All right. Well, I have, I guess I'd like to pose a question, or a couple of questions for Stephen. I was going over the warrant, the draft warrant, which I guess is what we're really voting on. And, there was a couple of changes I didn't quite understand. Because, I think it's Article 8, you have us bonding out the Crestview Circle culvert, which is, which was one of the suggested amendments that I passed out via email at the last meeting, which was the Budget Forum. But, that was not part of your original budget or capital plan. And, so, while I'm supportive of the idea generally, I guess what wasn't clear to me was where that money went in the budget. I mean, we're, that $219,000, we're freeing that up, and that's what you're saying, it's freeing it up, but where's it going?
It could go towards pavement. I think we reassigned it for pavements and a little bit, a little bit sidewalks, yeah.
And you also, didn't you pick up...
Chapter 90 eligible expenses.
Right.
But, I guess, but that's, but, you know, on your capital budget, you don't have, I mean, that's, it's unchanged. So...
No, that's not true.
Richard, that's the problem with the, with the motion, is we've got things that were submitted to us in two different formats, and the question is, when you say the Town Manager's Budget and Capital Plan, is it what was submitted to us two weeks ago, or that we were considering last week, or is it...
It'll be reflected in the articles you have in front of you, which the changes made. Alex, what, and I, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the money for Crestview was Chapter 90 funding.
Right.
So, in Article 9, you're voting to authorize the expenditure for Chapter 90 funds. The $400,000 carried earlier in Article 4...
That's general fund.
That is general fund. So, that's where the split would be. Is that...
All right. So, you're saying the $219,000, is there any proposal about how that's allocated between pavement and sidewalk? I mean, I had an idea of $179,000 for pavement, so we could get up to the original figure of $1,050,000, and then $40,000 for sidewalk. I mean, did you have... I just, I'm just trying to figure out what it is that you're proposing.
Well, it goes in, I mean, it goes into the pool of Chapter 90 funds, and because Chapter 90, the final number isn't usually established before the articles close, we kind of leave it open like this. But, it would go towards, I mean, Chapter 90 funds. I think, I think we can state the intent of what we want to do with it, but the intent was back into the pavement. Based on the discussion of the board, restore the funding of the, fully fund the $600,000 of the pavement program, and I don't know what the exact number is on the sidewalks.
I just wanted to check. Ms. Angelique just made the motion. Who voted it?
I second.
Okay, thank you.
So, to Mark's point, we're now, are we operating off of the warrant article, or are we operating off of the Budget worksheet and the Capital Plan worksheet?
My motion was for the warrant articles, that Budget on the warrant articles. So, I would say let's work off that.
Can I just add? The warrant article has very, very large numbers for town budgetary departments. For example, it's got General Government Public Safety Plan. So, we're voting on those numbers, and we're not going off of what I'll call line item, the line item budget at all.
Well, those line items add up to the numbers that are here, Mark.
So, those are, this is the...
Yes, yes. Those are, in Article 3, that has been the Town Manager's Budget Proposal that was presented back in February.
Well, Paul, maybe I, if I couldn't...
Sure.
I just have a question then. So, can you, with the warrant, reconcile the warrant that's written, it says approve the 2016 operating budget totaling $59,99,626.
That number is wrong. It should be $60,425,388. I just noticed that today. It is the same number that's in the total.
That's, that was my question. Thank you.
Within the wording of Article 9, at the end of the second line, Alex, there's a number of $59 million.
Article 9, that's the...
I'm sorry, Article 3. I'm sorry. Article 3, the second line, there's a number of $59 million.
Yeah.
That number is incorrect. It should be, it should be the number that represents the total on the bottom, the $60,425,388.
Okay. So, why is that number different than the number that's on the Budget worksheet? This here, the spreadsheet that you gave us. Because that number, $60,603,199.
You have the Budget worksheet dated February 13th?
No, where would the date be on it?
No.
Yeah.
February 13th, it's $60,425,388.
And I don't think we've gotten anything updated since then.
You don't, you never, no, there were no updates to any of this. This was the number that was originally submitted by the Town Manager.
And we don't know, there's been no votes to amend it yet.
Correct.
So, it's, as, the budget, under consideration, we have submitted, we've had a lot of discussion about things, but we have not changed any of that, even that one vote that we took the other night. This is not a budgetary vote.
So, Stephen, I feel like I still haven't gotten the answer, because in your original capital worksheet, you had $471,000 dedicated to pavement preservation for Chapter 90 funds, and none for sidewalks. And then, $219 was for Crestview Circle. So, what I'm trying to figure out is where, where exactly does that $219 go? I mean, if you were to put it all toward pavement preservation, it would actually be above the total amount for pavement preservation that you were seeking, which was $1,050,000. Again, my, you know, I'm going to introduce this amendment, but I need to figure out what we're working on first, is to get it up to that figure, and then the balance would be for sidewalks. But, I just don't know what, what it is that you're proposing.
Well, like I said, I think we haven't proposed a specific split. I mean, the intent is to put it back in sidewalks and pavement. The recommended plan is the $600,000. If you put this, if you put the general fund component, portion of that, is we only recommended funding $400,000.
Right. I understand all that. But, I mean, you had a specific amount before of $471,000 for Chapter 90 pavement preservation. I just need to know what that number is right now.
Alex, maybe I can answer it. If you're looking over on, if you're looking over on the right here, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
That $471,000 is a holding number pending what we actually get allocated from the state.
Right.
Okay? Which, in the past, has been around that number. But, if the state comes in with, and they're talking about a much larger number, a larger number than $471, Chapter 90 will be larger than $471. That's why, at the town meeting, we don't appropriate an amount of money. We appropriate that we will accept whatever the state, you know, gives us in Chapter 90 without a dollar amount.
I understand. But, what, as of right now, we're working off $471?
Well, that's just an assumption.
I know, but...
Yes.
I'm just, so, again...
I haven't made a recommendation. My recommendation was to use the Chapter 90 money for Crestview Circle. The warrant article is a reflection of the discussion that has happened subsequent to my recommended budget. If you're asking what I think, the 242, or whatever, the 242 of Chapter 90, we got the kind of infusion of Chapter 90 we received, 21 of it or so is in, in that $471. I think I have that note in there on the budget. So, it was originally $450,000, now it's $471,000, which is about $21,000 from that 240 we got from Chapter 90. The 220 to round off the numbers for Crestview Circle is now back in play, and we can, honestly, we can decide. The board can make a recommendation of how much. If they want 200 for the pavement and 20 for the sidewalks, or 110 each. I mean, I haven't made a recommendation, but this has been the board's...
Okay, all right. Okay, understood. So, I just needed to know what we're operating off of. In, in Article 8, you're proposing that $47,000 be appropriated for the first year's debt service on the culvert project. And where's that $47,000 coming from?
But, this is not, this is a warrant article that we drafted in response to select board debate. This wasn't my original recommendation.
No, no, I just need to know where it's coming from.
It's coming from the tax levy.
Okay, so that's general funds?
General fund tax levy.
Okay, that's all I need to know. All right.
From our 2.5% for capital.
From our 2.5%, right. This, all this, though, it comes out to a balanced budget as presented the way that it is. But, that was an amount, that would be the first year's principal and interest payment that I put in my picture.
I thought it was general fund, but I went in short. So, here's, here's the other question, Stephen. For sidewalks, this is Article 4, your original spreadsheet was $200,000, and then you have $186,100.
That, I can, that was the adjustment I had to make to make all this balance, Alex.
Okay. So, where did that go?
We don't have the additional tax levy, so it's gone. It's off the table. We're up to the, we're up to the maximum tax levy.
No, okay.
So, I had to reduce something. That is where I took it from.
Oh, I see. So, so is that a sort of a recalculation from this?
Not from the operating budget, from the capital side, though.
Gotcha.
So, in essence, the capital, overall capital plan is gaining from this recommended action on Crestview Circle, another $219,000 to do maintenance work, as you talked about. That, to some extent, to get the debt service and everything under that 2.5% cap, the general fund component of sidewalks was reduced by $14,000.
$13,900.
$13,900. But, we may spend another $50,000 or whatever on sidewalks. So, it is a somewhat of a shift of funds to get it all to balance out under the budget, but the overall gain is additional funds being spent on maintenance work this year versus in the, in the project being, I think through a ban issued, through debt issued, the Crestview Circle project.
All right. So, I guess what I'd like to do at this point is to make a motion to allocate that $219,000 as follows. $179,000 for pavement preservation and $40,000 for sidewalk reconstruction. Yes. The motion is to take the $219,000 gained from the Crestview Circle project and allocate it, those Chapter 90 funds, for $179,000 for pavement preservation, $40,000 for sidewalk reconstruction.
I'll second for discussion. I got a question.
Okay, Stephen, seconded, we're under discussion.
Paul, when Alex talks about $219,000 for the Crestview Circle or Crestview Project, that was the whole amount. If that is funded, and you may have said this, and there's a lot of numbers being vanted around, where's the debt service coming from? What line item?
It would be added to. It's, the debt service is part of Article 8. It would be, it would be added to the operating budget number that is presented in Article 3. It would be added to it.
Where's it coming from, though?
Taxes.
We spent $219,000.
It's coming from taxes.
But, doesn't some other expense line have to be reduced by that amount, since you had a balanced budget?
There was an amount of $13,900 that had to be reduced in total to make all this balance.
So, that's where the sidewalk money came from, to pay for potentially a bond for Crestview?
I guess you could look at it that way.
Can you just...
But, if it was balanced before, I think what you're getting at is if it was balanced before, what's the debt service?
If we've got $47,000 of first-year principal and interest payments, or whatever it is, on Crestview bond being paid, it would seem to me that there's $47,000 less available for overall capital. So, instead of $219 being available, we really would only have $170,000, or, right?
I'm taking it from the premise that the $219, the actual number in excess FY '15 Chapter 90 money is $242,000.
Right.
So, to me, you've gained $23,000.
Of Chapter 90 money?
Of Chapter 90 money. Because I believe the FY '16 Chapter 90 money is closer to the $471.
Cool. $450,000, or $471,000, if they go to $200,000.
But, we don't know what that is, so...
Right. You're right. We do not know what that is.
But, Paul, my, my point is that the, the release of FY '15 Chapter 90 money, that was truly $242,000 that came to us, or that's been promised to us now.
No, it's already released.
Okay.
Spendable today.
So, if we take that $242,000, okay, you said that there was a certain amount of money you, what was it, 20, 29,000 that you moved somewhere else?
And I only, I took $13,900.
And put it into... But, if we have $219,000 allocated to Crestview, or had, right, if we now want to allocate $47,000 to Crestview for next year, the Crestview Culvert for next year, because of interest and, and principal payments, wouldn't it seem that there's $172,000 left to move into other payment and sidewalk?
I understand what you're saying. I think what we'd have to do is go back to the original proposal for capital that the Town Manager proposed. We'd have to go back and reconcile that, because one of the things there was there was $100,000 proposed for the fire truck, I believe, as an example. So, I'll just do it from a total standpoint. The original proposal that the Town Manager made, that we had for a balanced budget for capital, was $1,416,672. And that can be found, if you look at the worksheet, that also went with the Town Manager's budget back on February 13th. That's the exact number that he has for capital.
Say that number again, $1,000,000?
$1,416,672.
Boy. I've got $1,435,000, but I don't have $1,416,672. I don't know.
Mark, if you, if you go to my master worksheet...
Yeah. Got it?
Yeah.
On the bottom...
213.
213.
Yeah.
We have the operating budget, and on the bottom, we have capital, $1,416,672.
Actually, can you, I'm trying to keep up with you.
Okay. There's this master...
Page...
Of the capital, not of the budget.
Of the cap, all right, the capital.
February 13th, same data.
Mark is showing...
All right, page four of the capital. Got it.
No, it's page one.
No.
Look at the... Alex, it's...
A master...
It's Mark, it's...
There are a lot of capital budgets. I'm asking you just to...
The Town Manager's capital budget?
I'm asking, there's, on a February 13th, there's a master worksheet. It looks like this, Alex.
It's not the line item one, it's the vertical chart, not the horizontal one.
I guess I don't have that.
Okay. So, I see that 1,416,672.
That's the amount, and all this balances, as, as that cover sheet shows, with a zero variance on the bottom. Now, if you were to add, from Article 4, the amounts that we're raising and appropriating, $1,325,300...
To Article 4?
If you... From, from Article 4, there's an amount of raising and appropriating.
Right, right, right.
And then, just below that, we're raising and appropriating $44,372,000.
Right.
And then, if you add the $47,000 that is in Article 8, that's $1,416,672.
How do you like that?
Amazing, isn't it? But, that, but, I, again, it, I think because there's a lot of moving parts, it would be a very complicated reconciliation to go back to the original one and try to reconcile it to this. But, the combination of those three numbers comes back out to the $1,416,672, which is on the master, and that was what you, that is what the Town Manager had originally, in his first capital program, had, had recommended, that amount of money.
Presented to the Capital Planning Committee, and that's when I said, we did, we were $18,000 short of the full 2.5% to get the budget to work. That's that number. And then, it's kind of gone through some iterations, and the Capital Planning Committee has made some adjustments here and there, recommended some adjustments. But, again, the recommended plan is not, we haven't voted on a plan yet. So, his numbers are all key to the original recommendation.
What's the impacts on the budget we got in front of us if we implement changes Alex is recommending?
He's recommending something that is, doesn't affect the tax levy. His recommendations for Chapter 90 money, if I recall correctly.
Yes.
And there's, there's no impact on any of these numbers whatsoever, with regard to the tax levy. That's a side budget with state money coming in, and folks can allocate that. Whatever amount comes in, because we don't really know the full amount, it'll have no impact on these numbers presented.
That's, that's with the assumption that the article, was it Article 8? That's something, assuming Article 8 passes. If Article 8 does not pass, then we're back to having it in the budget.
Potential.
Right.
So, I guess what I'd say, Alex, is, we have to make, I guess you don't have to make sure Article 8 passes, but if Article 8 fails and the Crestview Circle project is not, with issued debt, then the split on the Chapter 90 formula gets a little...
Well, no, but, but in fact, it's... Well, no, but in fact, it's, there's 47,000 dollars that isn't from general fund revenue that's not allocated.
Right.
If Article 8 fails.
If Article 8 fails, you would have 47,000 dollars in excess capacity. And then if you folks so voted, you could reallocate again the Chapter 90 money to do Crestview.
Right. Alex, can I just, you know, clearly, these numbers are, pardon me, somewhat arbitrary, but your choice of allocation between pavement and sidewalks.
Right.
Was it the same ratio as otherwise, or was it intended to bring something up to a certain level, or?
Well, if you, I mean, if you, do you have my sheet here? I mean, the idea was to get as close as we could to the target for pavement preservation and for sidewalk reconstruction. And, you know, it's, you know, falls short a little bit on sidewalk, but more so on pavement. I was thinking pavement really needed to have the full allocation because of all the damage that we've been sustaining this past year. It seemed like the sidewalk was, again, very necessary, but, you know, if we're going to make a slight priority, then it would be pavement.
So if I read your amendment correctly, the new request would be for 579,000 dollars of town money for pavement, in addition to both the Chapter 90.
No, no.
The FY15, Chapter 90 money, and the FY16, Chapter 90 money. That's what I'm reading, because it's, we already had budgeted, or had in this budget, 400,000 of town money for pavement. And you want to add 179 to that 400?
Well, no, I'm adding 179 to the 471 of Chapter 90. Yes, I am? That's what Paul's nodding.
You would have pavement preservation money coming from the general fund, the 400,000 dollars.
Yeah.
You'd have the Chapter 90 money from FY16, which is the 450 or 471.
Right.
Plus, you would have the Chapter 90 money from '15, the 219,000. You would have those three.
Which is actually 242.
242. So you have, you know, you've got a pretty good chunk of change there.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Alex, is that, on the right-hand side, that 471, which is actually 450, and the 219, which are, those are Chapter 90 money.
That's what I've been saying.
But we also have 400,000 dollars of town money.
Of general funds.
Right.
And that would remain.
And you're going to add 179,000 to that?
To the Chapter 90.
No, he's just talking about a division of the Chapter 90, not an addition to.
Yeah, it's a division, right. It's an allocation of the Chapter 90 money that's getting freed up from bonding out the Crestview Circle project.
Can I, LCTV just sent me a note to make an announcement, that Channel 12 is off-air, and they're on Channel 15, 809, and live streaming, and they asked us to make the announcement. Sorry.
Okay.
So the announcement made.
So those numbers dumped onto all the numbers we're already talking about, just to mix it up. And Mark, I do want to clarify. The 242 we got, okay? 219 with the Crestview, because that's the cost. The remainder is in that 471, because we are carrying 450. Because 450 is what we got last year.
Right, okay. So, and it's the 219 we're going to reallocate.
So it would be 471 plus 219 would be our FY16, Chapter 90 allocation to do Chapter 90 things.
No, no, no. That's FY15 and, it's FY15 supplemental and FY16.
Technically correct. You can spend it now or then. So technically, if you wanted to spend the 219 filling potholes right now, I guess in theory you could, but I think.
So essentially, here's the point, we're looking at a million dollars on roads.
Correct.
And 240,000 dollars on sidewalks.
Well, I have another idea further down is to.
Right, but right now, it's a million, a million dollars on roads.
Right, so, but there's some other amendments that would get the sidewalks up to, close to 300,000. So.
Fine, but right now, we're talking about a million dollars on roads, okay. My personal opinion is, can we, A, manage that kind of projects when we found last year that we actually deferred part of it to this year because of scheduling? And what kind of roads, how many roads are we going to be tearing up at once with a relatively compact construction?
One thing for sure, like they not yours.
My whole yard's being torn up. That's a different, that's already been approved.
Mario, I don't know if that was rhetorical or.
No, it was really.
Okay, and I think, we go through this every year, you've referred me to this before, the fiscal year includes this half of this, this part of the spring. So even though we don't get, even if a job is approved at town meeting and the money is let on July 1st, if we don't get it done between July 1st and November 15th, it doesn't mean we didn't, we failed. We have the entire year to do the work. If we lived in a warmer climate, we'd be working right now. But because of availability of asphalt, and we have our own winter moratoriums went to that Maple Road when we didn't really adhere to it, and it was torn up all winter. So the answer is, yes, I believe we could, because it is really just a lot of contract oversight. We only do a small, I mean, I think our in-house sidewalk budget's about 5,000 dollars, just for patches here and there. Sidewalk replacement usually would go along with some of the road projects we'd be doing. If we're going to pave an area, we would do it. And then we'd have the same person in the field overseeing all of it. So I think we could. I mean, I think it's an aggressive play, but I've always agreed that infrastructure is an important thing, and in a community like Long Meadow, it's only as good as how much you're willing to invest in it.
Okay. Any more discussion? That was an amendment to the motion, correct, Alex?
Correct.
Okay.
But it doesn't really affect the budget. It's just a directive on how to break it up. Because it doesn't change the warrant.
Right.
I mean, I think what I would, I guess what I would say is, and I have to back it out, because I don't disagree with what you want to do. I think what I'd do is I would amend Article 8. And so when Article 8 comes up, and they talk about bonding Crestview, I would just say, with the funds to be out, with the, I don't know how you can word it.
We don't have Article 3 up as a vote thing. We only open.
But Article 8 has to pass to financially make it work. To make what Alex wants to do work, Article 8 has to pass.
What I would like, what I'd like to do before we get too many more discussions out, I'd like to really go back and even go to Article 1 and see if we can start to nail down some of the articles, so we can put them to bed.
The book's got to be done, so I might as well go through one at a time.
There's a motion on the floor.
The motion is not on a yeah, okay, that is a current motion, but he also said he's going to modify.
Not his, her motion.
No, that motion was just to approve the whole budget.
Right.
It's Article 3.
Which is Article 3, plus 8. And that's the way it was taken.
Well, and.
So either.
And then we spun from that into Article 8, okay.
No, because the motion was, was operating plus capital.
Okay, you ready to vote? On Article 3, you already voted on Article 3?
No, because we've got a motion on the floor for Article, for amendment.
Do you want me to withdraw, and we'll go, and we'll just start Article 1, 2, and 3 and go that way?
That's the way we should have done it.
Yeah, that's the way we should have done it, because we got screwed off to the side here, and we're going forty ways by Sunny. So you want to withdraw your motion, we'll bring them right back up. We've had the discussion.
I'll withdraw my motion, too. We'll start with.
Okay, let's go back, let's go back and see if we can get a motion for Article 1 up to get it approved.
Mr. Grant would do his motion to amend.
And it'll be coming back.
Ms. Angelita would do her motion.
Yeah.
I move to approve Article 1 on the warrant for the, I want to go backwards here.
Goldwing Trust.
For the May 12, 2015 town meeting to approve the administrative trustees and administer the William Goldwing Trust.
Is this second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? See no discussion, all in favor?
I do have one question, is that it doesn't list who the trustees are.
I noticed that, too.
Never has.
Sure, no?
Never.
I remember reading names at town meeting.
Yeah, I wondered why they weren't in there, too.
Okay.
But I figured, I must have missed it someplace along the line.
But anyway, I'm sure it'll be updated by town meeting.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll do it for a discussion. I move to approve Article 2 on the warrant. Second for discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion is, why are we going out of operation stabilization fund?
We only have 75,000 dollars in free cash.
Yeah, he had that in the explanation. Do you see your explanation?
No, I, but I.
So I guess.
Why don't we try to settle that up when there's free cash at the end of the fiscal year?
Because we would have a deficit at the end of FY, at the end of this fiscal year, by the time the new fiscal year is free cash and certified.
Okay.
Anything further?
Article, Article 2.
You're going to vote it?
Yeah, I am.
We've got a long evening. Slow down.
No more discussion on Article 2, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? It passed, five.
Okay, five.
Okay, let's get this going. I move to approve Article 3. And the warrant has amended, I mean, as presented, I'm sorry.
Again, the number would be 60,425,388 dollars.
Second, okay. Discussion?
Do you want to lead? Mark? No, okay. I'd like to make a couple of amendments to the budget. What we heard over the last couple of weeks, and Mark and I had this very similar discussions at the finance subcommittee level that we had here. There's one thing that I am disappointed with, is that we took 18,000 dollars from stabilization fund after bumping stabilization up to, and a small amount of money, but to bump up the operating budget, which was not the intent of why we bumped up stabilization. So my amendment would read.
Circle, capital?
We took from capital, stabilization, capital stabilization fund to put into the.
Oh, all right.
I would like to amend the budget to read 60,425,370 dollars. That money would result in a budget cut of one police vehicle with 18,000 dollars going back to capital.
Can you read this real slow?
Okay.
Yes, please.
She's trying to type it.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to keep.
Okay, so one, please.
I move to amend the budget to 60,425,370 dollars. Which is a reduction of 18,000 dollars. I would, my amendment includes a reduction of a police vehicle to be purchased, was it 36,500? 18,000 dollars would go back to capital, which was the original intent of the vote to move up capital, 18,500 dollars to put on the side, and I'll go into that in a second. The second item would be to reduce the police and fire overtime by 20,000 dollars each, and transfer that to the reserve fund as a line item. And the third item would be to, oh, let me put my glasses back on.
At least three separate amendments?
This is all, this is all part of my amendment.
All part of the one amendment.
And the third item would be to reduce, we have three department heads retiring to reduce the salaries allocated in their general fund line item by 10% to be transferred into the debt line item with the 18,500 from the police car, which will give us 50,000 dollars, which would allow us to fund Crestview Circle.
Can you say that last part? I didn't catch it.
The third, the third budget item would be to reduce the line items for the three department heads that are retiring by 10%, which I think is a reasonable expectation for people who've been in the position for years. Transfer that money into the debt line item with the 18,500 from the police car, which could then go and fund a bond, that would total 50,500 to fund the Crestview bond payment.
So wait a minute, so how much, how much is reducing the chief, these chiefs?
11,900 from the police, 11,200 from the fire.
So what does that total?
And 9,000 from DPW, which totals 32,000.
So 32,000.
100.
32,100 plus the 18.
Five.
Five.
That to be transferred into the debt service item.
Where did that 18,500 come from, Paul?
Half of the police car.
Yeah, I just make a recommendation, and of course, it's going to fall on dead ears, because we don't want to do it again. But a motion that large, it'd be nice if you'd actually printed it up, so we could have a copy of it.
I'll read it.
I know you read it. I can't write as fast as you read.
You know, and honestly, I was thinking about doing that, and I did.
Yeah.
That's my.
This is a pretty complex motion.
I apologize. I was thinking about doing that, and my fault. You're absolutely right. I should have typed it up.
Do you have it written anywhere? Like, you could email Rebecca to make sure the minutes have it correctly?
I'll type, I can type. I'll type it up. I've got it written down. I'll type it up. I'll do it for you right now.
All right, I'll second for discussion purposes.
And I'm going to send it via email to the rest of the board, so I don't violate open meeting law. We're in a meeting.
So, so Paul, you said you wanted to put 18,000 dollars back into capital from the police vehicle?
No, we used 18,000 dollars.
No, I understand the rationale, but where exactly would that go in capital?
All right, that's a discussion for Article, then Article 8.
Okay.
That's, I'm looking to straighten up the budget.
Understood, all right.
I don't even know how to begin the discussion on that, because there was like five or six different moving items here. And I'm looking that we're cutting public safety, why we're cutting public safety, where it's going to go. I have no idea. This idea of transferring from reserve funds, I had comments about that, because I said we're getting a whole new chiefs, we're really going to be cutting 20%, 20K out of each. I mean, and again, I'm not even sure if I understand all the parts to it. So I'm going to vote against it.
How about the police vehicles? What's our stats on those, on the mileages? I know there was discussion on mileages.
Yeah, they gave us the whole thing.
Well, I haven't seen it.
Well, I did send it, I only sent it to Mark because he asked for it, but we had gone through the numbers last Monday. No, I mean, no, at the budget forum on Monday, not the budget forum, the last Monday's meeting in the police community room, the chief went through all the updated mileages, and we talked about why it's important to have a vehicle on here, and he even, and the one I submitted tonight, that we sent around, has a projected mileage for a year from now, which would be in this fiscal year. And the mileages, you know, they get up there. I mean, I think it's a, you know, it's a risk proposition to not replace the vehicle. And the risk is that you're going to have one, one of the patrol vehicles or a supervisor's vehicle, which would really probably be the most likely candidate. And it's the patrol, no, it's not the chief's vehicle, it's the patrol supervisor, which goes out a lot. You can see the mileage is not necessarily high, and we're having a lot of problems with the vehicle going on. So we just had an engine fail that was replaced under warranty, it got rear-ended, it's starting to really cost us some money. So that would probably be the most likely candidate for replacement. You know, our police department's not going to shut us doors if we don't get a new vehicle. I just don't know that I see the need, we were able to balance the budget, including the vehicle, to strip it out and take the risk.
Richard, yeah, look, yeah. Marie?
And I spoke too, and I got the sheet too, because I have for another reason. And the, there's four vehicles that are out there, and they're being heavy-duty use every single night, 24/7. And if we really decide why we're cutting, I have no idea. If we decide we want to cut it because we need the 36,000 somewhere, then you're really lining yourself up to have to buy three cars in about a year or two. I mean, because right now, our replacement target's at 100,000. I know Mark says it should be 160. I don't want to be the house that's waiting when that car breaks down. So I don't see the reason to drop, to cut out the 36,000. It's balancing. And it's not as if it's a frivolous request from seeing the mileage, and I'll pass that on to you. But you didn't get a copy of.
Yeah, what I was interested in specifically was which vehicle are they replacing, and is it eligible at this time?
So, I mean, we, I asked some fairly detailed questions when we were there. And what the chief said, there wasn't going to be anything that was going out of service. He said that one of the vehicles was going to be repurposed for the K-9 unit. So that's exactly what he said.
He did say that, but we did, we've had a subsequent discussion about the supervisor's vehicle. And you can see, I mean, you can see the projections. I think his thinking has changed a little bit since then. And he may leave it to the next chief to make the decision on what to replace. But you have, there'll be, this time next year, there'll be one, two, three, four vehicles, four vehicles over 100,000, and then two vehicles, 97,000 and 95,000 respectively. So you'll have five vehicles, or six vehicles, that are right near that, right near or over the 100,000 dollar threshold that most departments look at as the time to replace. And we're only, he's only proposing the one.
I know, but, I mean, we went through all this. I mean, part of, part of what he was explaining is, he wants to keep online some high-mileage vehicles. You know, for good reasons. You know, he says, look, you know, we could park an old vehicle next to a road project and have the lights going. So it's not like we're using the frontline patrol vehicles with the high mileage. He was very clear about that. And in fact, we have more vehicles than we do have. And in fact, we have more vehicles than we do have people on shift at any one time. I mean, I, we should be clear about that as well. So, to me, this, this seemed, and he was very clear, that we were going up a car. And so that we could give it to the K nine unit.
Go ahead, Marie.
My understanding, I said specifically, what car is this to be replaced, and he said the supervisor's car. That is, as Richard has the paper now, that shows it's, it's bumping the ceiling. And one of the things that I thought was very effective comment was, so you could skip this year, we're gonna skip it, we'll stretch out our fleet. We have all these cars we could have passed on, but we can't because we're green communities now, and so there are cars that are on there, but they really cannot be used for patrol. We've got four cars we need in active patrol, and if we really do that, we're gonna, it's gonna blow up our budget in another year or two. And because we're going to have a lot of cars that are reaching it, so if we really decide to do it, what he's gonna start doing is putting those Crown Vic, that he normally wouldn't use, back into circulation to cut down the use of those other cars. So, my question is, we're really cutting the, the police car, we needed the money, I could understand it, but it's, it's fitting into what's called a fleet management plan. So you're not hitting yourself up against the wall in two or three years, plus why are we taking out public safety money to put it into pavements? Or when we have almost a million dollar pavements, and I know that was the discussion, if we're gonna do that, what are some other needs in our department? Maybe we should be looking at a monitor system or something. But, I just don't see the purpose in cutting out the car and breaking up a fleet management plan, that I think has been carefully thought out.
I, 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 in looking at this chart, the chief, I believe, sat before us and said, what, they put, how many thousand miles a year?
I mean, depends on the car.
Yeah.
About thirty thousand a year?
Yeah, patrol wagons, thirty thousand. And he's March fifteenth, and he's saying to the end of the year, he's gonna put thirty thousand more on these, so it looks like the, the figures have been increased rather dramatically from now to the end of the year. It looks like there's a full year's usage been put on every one of them, so I.
It's a projection.
But I mean, even his projection is well above what he said it is, so it looks like the projections are skewed a little bit on this, if we're using a full year. I don't know when he's closing down his year, I don't know if he's going to the end of the fiscal year, I, I have no idea, well, it said December fif, December thirteenth, so he's on a calendar year, so. Seems like his estimates are in excess of what he said his averages were, that's all. It's just an observation, I looked, when I looked at the figures coming across.
Yeah, Paul? I'm just sharing that with Richard, because that's the, I didn't see that, I thank you for emailing it to me. I made my motion for a few reasons, one is what I heard over the last, I don't know, three, four weeks, is why we can't do anything. I have, in my folder, today I was looking at some old documents, and two years ago, we had eleven police cars, now we have twelve, we're not looking to get rid of one, we're looking to add one. We were told that Tahoe was a supervisor, supervisor's vehicle, and we used it all winter, and so the mileage that was used in the winter shouldn't have been, you know, added, it shouldn't be thirty thousand dollars on, because we used a pickup truck in the Tahoe, because of the conditions, and I understand that. But everything I've heard is why we can't do anything, and that we'll take care of it next year, and we'll do it next year. This is looking at ways that, I mean, if you look at the line items for, for department heads, that have been here for, the chief is, police chief's been here for thirty years. Fire chief has been here for well over twenty years, the DPW director's been here for ten years, and we had this discussion at, at the subcommittee level, and I. And I'm not gonna put words into the town manager's mouth, but I think the general discussion that Mark and I had were, you would expect the new people coming in to, to come in at a lower salary. We're looking at funding projects, you know, we haven't, we've got potentially three major projects for the town, not even counting sewer infrastructure, water infrastructure, drainage issues. That are gonna cost, you know, thousands of dollars in this budget, and here's a way to take some of that money and move it over. If it doesn't get spent and department heads come in at a lower dollar amount, and start in salary, it goes back to free cash and we'll spend it in another way. You know, we just approved Article two, which took money out for the snow removal, because we spent four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in free cash at the Fall Town meeting, so. At some point in time, this is looking at something that we can do, instead of saying we can't do it, because it doesn't make sense. You can't have thirteen, twelve, thirteen police vehicles, and, and we talked about this again at the subcommittee, I know each of them has an explanation, but if we had twenty, they would each have a reason why we would have twenty. And I, and I just think at a point, it has to stop that we're gonna hold on to old vehicles to, for these things that we say that we're gonna do, and it makes money at five thousand dollars a year for putting a car at a, at a workstation. It's nice, but at some point in time, we gotta stop spending money, and to balance these things, and, you know, I, I just think, I don't think these are unreasonable. We're reducing the general fund operating budget by eighteen thousand, it's moving some of that money around, yes, but it's putting in places that are, that are needed. It's not taking money out of, it's taking money out of salary line items, and we're gonna move it into debt service, and, you know, at some point in time, we have to come to the, to the realization that, you know, we have twenty million dollars worth of four-inch water mains in, in town, and, you know. Three, four years ago, we were talking about that being a priority. I don't think we've touched them, unless they were in the regular course of business. So, at some point in time, we have to start looking at what we're doing inside of the budget. And it's not, it's not a bad budget, it's not a great budget, it's a budget, but these are, these are, I think, recommendations and things that we spoke about at the subcommittee level that we've brought before the board, and I'm just making my motion on it. You don't have to agree, and you can disagree and agree, but it's there.
I'll stand corrected on one thing, real quick, I made a misstatement, the chief's mileage was estimated through three sixteen sixteen of next year, so I stand corrected, his, his averages is current, I misread the chart, okay? Go ahead, Paul.
Paul, on the motion that you read, what was the total budget?
Sixty million, four twenty-five, three seventy.
Okay, that's only a reduction of eighteen dollars. You did your math.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, yeah, well, there you go. There you go. It would be, okay.
Sixty million, three eighty-eight, eight eighty-eight.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I took the eighteen out the easy way.
The other, just.
That's creative budget.
Yep. The other note for you is that the town manager had already taken out five thousand dollars out of the fire chief's budget?
Out of the twelve, not on my, not on my sheet.
Yeah, he, Paul, mine he had.
On the February thirteenth sheet.
February thirteenth sheet, there's the town manager's recommendation, it's now at the one oh seven, three sixty-four, which is a five thousand dollar reduction.
Through attrition, right?
Well, he took it out based upon the fact that there's gonna be a replacement through attrition, the same, same reasoning, except we're just starting with different numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I think, in principle, and I said this at the subcommittee, the goal is to, if you had people going out at top scale, the goal is to not bring people in at top scale. I don't, in concept, like to get our, the towns' hands tied, when we're, when we wanna go through the best, pursue the best and the brightest, to fill those important positions. But I agree in principle that, you know, you wanna be able to, and I think we've done that in positions where we could save money, and we're filling the positions and attracting high qualified candidates, we've done that. The treasurer collector, or the finance department's budget, that we highlighted in our presentation is a clear example of that, so I think I've already established my track record for doing exactly what you want to do. And so, at the end of the day, the amendment you're offering isn't, you know, gonna epically change the budget or devastate it. I am more concerned about the police vehicle than everything else, because like I said, I think it's a, well, do two things, the police vehicle, I think, is, I don't, because we are able to balance the budget and give the police the equipment they're gonna need. Because they're eventually gonna need a car, and if it's not today, it's gonna be next year, and you only get the, even if we hold off and bind a car till March to stretch the fleet out, as we talked about, you get more mileage and years out of that car. But, we only get to appropriate it at this one time, unless we come back for free cash appropriation. So, there's that, and then, I, I don't agree, I mean, I think to simply, and I'm, I am kinda putting words in your mouth, Paul, but, you know. The assumption that because we have overtime accounts, we have overtime abuse, I disagree with, I think are.
I never said abuse.
But, which is why I think, I think the transferring it to the finance committee reserve fund is a solution in search of a problem, because the department heads do a great job managing overtime. The line items themselves, the number, has stayed relatively stable, or maybe in the police department, the case has gone down, but the wages covered by that line item have gone up, year after year, which speaks to their effectiveness in managing it. And so to turn over the management of those funds from departments that have done a great job doing it, to the finance committee, I don't, it's, like I said, it's not the end of the world, I just don't see the need for it.
Go ahead, Marie.
Yeah, I don't see the, what the goals are in all of these changes. And, you know, the subcommittee was supposed to, to go and ask questions, so we would be able to better analyze this budget and bring it forward to us. They didn't, we didn't get really saying, well, this is a problem in the budget, and this is what we're trying to fix. We're suddenly getting this amendment and saying, well, we want to pull, was it, twenty thousand dollars from each of the overtimes. Okay, so what was the problem that we're fixing there? We're told that we want to cut the police car. Well, what's the problem that we're trying to fix? Is there something that is missing elsewhere that we need to rebalance it? And, so much of this just seems to be arbitrary to me, and I don't see what goals we're trying to fix in, in making changes to the budget. Is it gonna make much of a difference? We're talking about a sixty million dollar budget, no. But I wish we had goals that the subcommittee was coming and saying, well, these are concerns we have in the budget, and this is what we're trying to fix, rather than saying, we're cutting here, this has to be cut here, that has to be cut there, and I, I don't see the purpose in any of it. And right now, we have a delicately balanced budget. I understood the, taking the Crestview and going from bonding on that, because I feel that was a mistake that was made last year. And the year before, we were trying to pay cash out of things that we could have bonded, that were worthwhile bonding, so I can understand that. But then all of this other moving of the parts, I, I don't understand the fact that it's all been put in one big amendment. Again, I can't see how we can even handle the concept of that with, with it not even being written out.
Okay, I'd like to, if no jerking call or question on this.
Actually, I'd like to, actually, I have a question, and then I would make an amendment.
Okay.
Good. So, Paul.
Yes.
If we use fifty thousand, five hundred dollars to go for debt service for Crestview, what about the forty-seven that's already allocated for the debt service? I mean, do we get more, where does that go?
Yeah, my, my debt service schedule had it on a five-year program.
Yep.
We could accelerate this to a two and a half year program.
Okay.
Actually, it would be forty-four, five, because there already was a reduction in the fire chief line item, so.
Yeah, whatever the amount is, but we would just accelerate from my five-year program to whatever this, this entailed. Or, you know, it may even happen though, Alex, quite honestly, that we would reduce the first year by this total, let's just call it a hundred thousand dollars for discussion purposes, and still go on a five-year program based upon future years' budgets. Because if we don't appropriate that same amount next year, we can't accelerate it that much.
But I guess what I'm getting at is, you, before Paul made his motion, we had forty-seven thousand, five hundred in the capital.
Yes.
Capital budget to pay for that debt service, does that free up forty-seven thousand dollars?
I, if it's in that budget, I'm going to use to accelerate our debt service payment, if it's in, if it's in the debt service budget.
Alright, but theoretically, as we're discussing these capital thing, capital items, we, we could, that would free up another forty-seven?
You could, by not voting it in Article eight, or not voting it to put into debt service, you could free it up for other uses. But if they're voted as such, I'm going to accelerate the debt service.
Gotcha.
On those programs.
Alright, so my, the amendment that I would, okay, actually, so if, I guess what I was getting at was, I, I want the, the money for the police vehicle going into capital, and it sounds like that's what would happen. I mean, is that your understanding of it, Paul?
Well, mine was shift eighteen thousand dollars back to capital, the other eighteen five was gonna go into the debt service.
But then, that would have the effect of freeing up forty-seven, five that's already allocated to capital, so, okay.
Paul, can I just ask if you, this, if you agree that the, that the number should be five thousand dollars less that you proposed because of the fire chief salary already having five thousand? So you had said.
Eleven two for the fire.
You had said eleven two for the fire, it really should be six thousand, two hundred additional?
Instead of eleven two, correct, because of five thousand was taken out already.
Okay.
I, I find there's nothing I can vote on without it seen in writing, this is, this is really ludicrous.
I sent it, I sent it to Rebecca and to everybody on the board.
Paul, do you want to amend yours, instead of it being fifty thousand, five hundred to be?
No, because that number doesn't really mean anything, other than my motion was sixty million, and, I mean. Sixty thousand, four hundred, seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
But, but I guess that the problem would be that.
Right.
It would have the effect of reducing the fire chief's salary by more than ten percent.
It would reduce the fire, the police chief's salary by eleven nine, the fire chief's salary by six thousand, two hundred, and DPW's salary director by nine thousand dollars.
You, I would think would be ten thousand, five hundred.
Some of it's water and soil.
So the DPW general fund?
I said all.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, Paul. You're correct.
Okay.
Okay, is there any more amendments on this thing?
I have no idea what's where.
Yeah, I don't either. I, the only thing, the only thing I can state is, I adamantly oppose hampering salary accounts. I understand, we like to lean that way, but we went through that with the town manager's search, and I know we can take it out of reserve and this, that, and the other, but. When you get into negotiations, it's a whole different ballgame, so I've already been there, and I've done that, as I say. I've got more questions than there are answers available for tonight, there's no doubt about that, and I'm not gonna get the answers, I mean, we've got a lot of budget material to go on through. I would have thought that there would be, on this, and I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just stating the fact, I would have thought, as a non-member of a task force or any of these, I thought there would have been more briefing up until this point, and we've been hit with a lot of information. To absorb in a very short period of time to make a decision on, and I know every board member has, has expressed the same, the same thoughts and fears when something's thrown in our face, immediately expected to vote on it tonight, and in fact, we've had that done to us. So I'm prepared to call a question, unless there's any more discussion on this issue.
I am.
Okay.
I find it extremely disrespectful. I mean, you're asking us to do major changes, we're in the middle of a town, of searches on three major department heads, we're talking about the earlier discussion we had in regards to the overtime account. And, so the finance subcommittee decides, oh, well, we're gonna make all of these changes in one amendment, because we don't really care about discussion, because I think you guys have worked the votes behind. And it doesn't really matter about writing out the motion and giving it to us, because it really, you're not really interested in discussion, it's something that you're just gonna shove through. So I find it very disrespectful, that if you two guys really decided, these are the things you want and have done, write it down in a motion. Do it in two or three motions, so we can actually have discussion, if you really care about what the rest of the, the select board members. But, you know, everyone else, everything has to be done, we have to give you all the charts, it all has to be done correctly for the town manager, but when it comes down to the subcommittee, you guys can just throw out anything you want. I just, I, I, you know, it was, it's a stupid amendment, absolutely stupid, and you don't really have any care in what we have to say about it. And, you know, if you'd broken it down to three or four, you had written it out, I feel that this could be an adequate discussion, but the way it is, I just find I'm insulted, I really am.
Go ahead, Marie.
Yeah, I apologize, Marie, that you feel insulted, I think every item that was, that was included in Paul's amendment, I did not know the amendment he was gonna offer tonight, I have not talked to him about it.
Well, then it's ridiculous.
But, but each item has been previously discussed at this, at this select board, under, you know, under reports from the, the finance subcommittee, and under proposals we had last week, when we really only had four people here. We talked about the, the police car, that should come as no surprise that there was a debt recommendation, we talked about the overtime, police and fire departments, that should come as, as no surprise. We talked about, I believe, even the salary reductions of, starting salary reductions. And so, you know, if you want to split up into different motions, we can do that, you know, we started out tonight by a single motion that you made.
Right.
To accept every single thing.
So we can start the amendments.
Well, to me, that's a, talk about disrespectful, that's one big thing to start with amendments, why don't we start approving this thing one section at a time?
And that's what we went back to do, and then we get this huge thing thrown at us, and no, it wasn't discussed on, on the, these cuts that were made, that are more specific. You talked about, let's cut out of the salaries, and all of a sudden, we're getting eleven and a half percent here, eleven percent here. Do what you want, because obviously, you're, you're ready to go with this, but I think if you really wanted the whole board to consider this completely, it should have been typed out. In fact, how many times did we say, bring, if you want to make amendments to the budget, bring it in writing? Alex did, Alex submitted some, but, some amendments to the budget, but, fine, do what you want to do.
Because so many things in writing in advance is against open meeting law, and you're the first one who'll come after us when we send out an email to everybody proposing something.
You send it to, there's ways of doing it, or even bring it in, in a written form tonight, but do what you're gonna do, but I find it wrong.
The point is, now I'd like to speak to the motion, or the amendments, if I could, okay?
Okay.
I believe that the, the change in the starting salaries of three department heads who are leaving is, is good management, it's good. It's good management by the Select Board in that it sets a parameter for the town manager. In no way, just as we've had in the past, do listed salaries prevent us from hiring people. This past year, we hired a, a department head whose salary was outside the budgeted salary. And the town manager came to us and said, "I've got a great candidate," the, the example is the adult center, "I have a great candidate and I would like to be paying her more," and that's what I'm, and that was what was done. And I have no doubt that if the town manager came to us and said, "I have a phenomenal candidate for police chief, fire chief, DPW director, and this is their salary," that we would say, "No." The problem I have is saying, "We're going to just leave this as an open, as an open book." What I don't want to find us, ourselves, in a position of is setting and establishing a salary for somebody who's different from what the Select Board expects. And I, as a Select Board member, believe that every salary in this town, including our departments, has, has a range. And that the difference in that range has to do with experience and time, you know? And where somebody starts in the range is fine, but we've had a, a police chief who's got six years or seven years of experience as a police chief, we've got a fire chief who's got many years of experience as a police chief, the DPW director's been with us ten years, that's very different from hiring somebody who may or may not have that experience. I think this is our way of, at least my way, of saying to the town manager, "Here's our range, if you've got the perfect candidate who falls outside the range, you come let us." It is the only control that we have in the Select Board over, over that process. It is the control of the budget. I think it's inappropriate to do it. And if, if the town manager believes that that's going to prevent us from hiring the right people, then the town manager needs to come back to us with that right candidate and say, "Let's go to the, the Finance Committee, let's get money from the reserve fund because this is the absolute perfect, perfect candidate." In terms of the, you know, reduction of overtime, I, you know, I, I've been really challenged by a couple of things I've heard over the last several months, not just here, but at the Finance Subcommittee. And the first thing I've heard is that, that, you know, each department needs its own budget. We, you know, we originally proposed, as a Finance Subcommittee, to combine the depart, the overtimes into a single, into a single fund for public safety. We were told that each department needed it so that they can manage the overtime. But yet, on the other hand, we're told they don't manage the overtime to use it up. So either they manage the overtime to a limit, or they, what I think we should be doing in public safety, I suspect we do in public safety, is we use the overtime judiciously as we need it to assure the proper level of safety in staffing, of, safety of our town and staffing of our departments. You know, we don't say to a, a police officer, "You can't go to, to court to testify in a, in a drunk driving or speeding." If somebody's arrested, they go there.
That's common, that's common information. I understand you'd like to address the issue, but could you narrow it down to your actual discussion?
Yeah, my discussion, Mr. Chairman, is that either you manage the budget or you just, or you just, you know, manage the operations of your department. And if you manage the operations of your department, what we're finding is that historically that, that this reduction in overtime is not going to be traumatic. And if we find out that circumstances happen because of vacancies or others that we need money, we have money that we'll be putting in the reserve for it.
Thank you. Marie?
Yeah, and we discussed, you said we had discussion, we had discussion on the overtime. And it was pointed out that there were turnbacks over the past few years, and the budget, overtime budget has been brought down, and has been brought down when there was actual.
Please.
Measurements. So now we're not having discussion anymore. It was overtime twenty percent, even though it was a discussion that was going to be down to maybe ten or five percent because we had new department chiefs coming in trying to manage it. And then, yeah, so you now have decided what the ceiling's going to be for police, fire, DPW. I would like to know what that is, because all of a sudden I got all these percentages thrown verbally at me tonight. So what is the, what are you talking about as a salary for the police, fire, DPW? I don't even know that.
This is, this is a subject that shouldn't be on the table.
Exactly. But this is what's being done by this Finance Subcommittee.
Not, not salaries of positions. I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not even, this is way beyond the realm of where we should be. We set policy, and we can set policy.
We set budget.
Yeah, but we approve the budget.
To me, and like I said, is the amendment going to destroy the budget? No, and I, I agree with Marie. It appears that, it appears that it's a done deal. But I guess what I would say is, there's no need for any of it because we were able to balance all the needs of the town and present a balanced budget and fund our capital plan. I think that, I think the thing that is, I guess, confusing or disappointing is that, yes, we did have a lot of these discussions at the Finance Subcommittee. The questions were answered multiple times. The chief, the department heads in question came to a meeting of the Select Board, answered the questions directly, explained why these things really weren't a fit for how the town actually operates. Despite all of that, the amendment is offered, no matter what information or answers came back, and I just, I have no idea why we would do that, other than, you're right, Mark, Select Board control. Because the town manager fixes compensation for town employees, and apparently, this, through this amendment, there wants to be control over that. And that's, and so this really, to me, is not about money at all. And that's what I can't understand is why we're using, you're right, Richard, the Select Board's a policymaking body. It seems like we're trying to make policy through the budget. And it's like I said, I, you know, I guess you can call the questions. Like I said, the money doesn't, doesn't add up to a lot, but I just, it's not about the money.
No, I, I agree it's not about the money. We, we've had some discussion, and I don't, I, I'm a little bit confused myself personally. And I, and I really mean this, because I've sat here and listened to every meeting, I've, I've gone to every meeting I've ever been invited to. And we've had information that comes out here, say, just tonight, that's brand new. Brand new. And, and you said you didn't know what Paul was going to introduce, and yet you sat here and defended almost line by line everything he mentioned. And you had a Subcommittee. I agree, that was your purpose. But your purpose was to come united to this board, and that has not happened. That didn't happen at the last meeting where the committee made a recommendation and both committee members voted in opposite on it. It confused me a little bit there. It started making me wonder, "What are we doing? Do, do we have a committee that's joined at the hip? Are these recommendations coming in, or is there other issues that have crept into the agenda?" I don't have to agree with everything that goes on the board, I only have one vote, like you do, and like Paul is, and everybody else. And, and I can see we're going to beat this subject to death, and I don't think we're going to make progress on it. Now, as Marie said, she feels a little bit bushwhacked on it. I don't know if I feel bushwhacked, I feel that they envisioned this process to work a little bit differently than it has worked. I didn't, I did, I expected tonight to basically be pop the bottle of champagne and relax, and it is not. We've still got another two hours of agonizing stuff to go through this budget. So if there is no further questions on this, I'd like, I'd like to call a question on this. Any further discussion required?
Yeah, I have to, because I, I really take exception to them. First of all, no other board member knew I was making that motion, the motions I made. Secondly, all of the items that I did make a motion on, they are, they were discussed. And since the town manager's budget is not what goes on the warrant, it is the Select Board budget, then we have every right to make an amendment to the budget. And we have. In every single year that I've been involved in budget-making process, we've made amendments to the budget. So, quite frankly, the, the things that, that I made the amendment on is that when we brought them up last week, they were basically dismissed by you. And, and we didn't come to a vote, we were two, two votes, Mr. Grant wasn't here.
Yeah, it was two, two votes.
Right, but we did make recommendations last week. So this isn't, you know, you, you can say that the whole amendment might be a surprise, but these are the points that we brought up. These are the same.
But you guys didn't even agree with yourself, as a Subcommittee.
No. Mr. Gold made a motion, I voted against it, because as I said that week, that night, it didn't go deep enough. Correct. That was, that's what I said.
Okay.
And that's why I offered my amendment this evening. So there's nothing that's really changed from that, other than the fact that we had the same discussion points. What changed is that I put my motion on the table.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Okay, call question, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, that is now, item three down, and that was a three-two.
Richard, I'd like to, okay, so that's the amendment.
Oh, that's right, we just had the amendment, didn't we?
All right, so I, I have another amendment to Article Three.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to get, I was trying to make progress.
I, well, so my amendment, so I'm going to move to transfer thirty-nine thousand dollars from the debt service and town-school employee retirement benefits item, line item, that's in Article Three, and specifically from the OPEB contribution, which is supposed to be two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-three-hundred, so the thirty-nine thousand would come from the OPEB contribution, and to put it toward the schools. And the reason why I'm doing that is to make it align with the budget that the school committee passed.
Is there a second?
Alex, I can hear discussion.
Okay, we're in discussion.
So, can I, Alex, you're talking about thirty-nine thousand from this, this line here above support.
Right, because that's, that's what includes the OPEB contribution.
And put it into the school budget.
Schools.
Correct. So you want, you want to take money for our commitment to an outstanding liability, which we just told our representative, it's one of the most major facing problems we got, to fill a primus, promissory note that may actually be resolved by the schools and the town manager? Is this thirty-nine thousand dollars out of a thirty-eight million dollar budget?
Well, I think it's thirty-two, but.
Thirty-two, okay.
The point is that it's, I mean, they went through a lot of cutting to get to where they're, they're actually cutting positions. I mean, this could be the difference between having an adjustment counselor at a middle school or not.
I think you're, you're putting a lot of facts on the, on the table that are not substantiated within, from the school committee here, and it's not been brought to light by anybody.
Well, okay, could I just finish what I was saying?
If, if you're putting factual information out, yes, we will.
Okay.
Or relevant information.
I didn't know you were screening on facts, but.
I am.
It all screened for you too.
Okay, good.
So we'll be all even on that. The, I mean, I'm not trying to be unpleasant about this, but the point that I'm trying to make here is that this, the thirty-nine thousand dollars that we would put toward the schools would make it so that they would not have to revote and upset the apple cart. That's number one. Second, I know that that money would have definite value. I have severe questions about whether this OPEB contribution will have value. We could be spitting into the ocean. And I know that other members of this board, at least in previous years, have felt the same way. So, so, I mean, so, you know, this is not crazy. I mean, it's, it's putting money into something that has definite value toward something that has, is a maybe.
Go ahead.
The one thing he said is from the OPEB for the teachers. Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 the OPEB, it's.
You're saying, you're saying the teachers, please, we don't separate it.
No, no, I know, it's from the line item, it's the OPEB liability per policy line item on our spreadsheet.
Right.
It's supposed to be two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-three-hundred, which is a hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-dollar increase per our policy. So if we took the thirty-nine thousand dollars out of that two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-three-hundred, we would still be increasing our OPEB contribution.
Well, then I am.
So we just wouldn't be increasing it by a hundred-and-five percent.
So I don't know why we have policies that we worked hard on this board to have, if we were going to do that one, this way, if you felt that we really, and of course, we had plenty of time to do this, you really felt it was important to give them town thirty-nine, the school thirty-nine thousand dollars more, we could have gone to our CFO and the town manager and asked how to do that because we felt that was important. But for us to arbitrarily say, "Well, this is where we're going to take it from," I, I just don't understand the way this board's running. So I disagree with it completely because these are promises that are made to the teachers, to the guidance counselor, to everyone else, that we are going to, and right now, we're not covering those promises. And so I know you think this is illusionary and it's going to be taken care of some other way, but as the years go on, they're going to go look back at that vote that was made tonight, and it is going to be something that will be held, because this is a responsibility we have. And I thought we voted on a policy, but we can turn it over within the month. Done.
Stephen?
So, I, I guess, you're right, we, we did want to fully fund the OPEB policy. We did learn from our, our call with our Moody's Rating Agency that, and they were softer on it than our financial advisor was, but our financial advisor was definitely firm on the fact that the OPEB contributions, even in what they would call a nominal amount, are important to make because the, the value, it's like making an investment in a, in a small savings account, over time, the value grows significantly, and that's the reason why you do a little bit each year. I guess in terms of giving the money back to the schools, I don't know if they've specifically asked you individually for it, but they have not come, like I said, we worked collaboratively with them. They said it at their meeting when they presented their budgets, we said it when they came here to present their budget, they talked about the level of collaboration, they talked about the Finance Subcommittee. And even though the school committee hasn't officially voted to reduce their budget amount, the people on, in the school leadership, who have been kind of doing the discussing, said, "Okay, this was a kind of a share of the pain thing." It wasn't an arbitrary, it was kind of an arbitrary deduction because we scraped and clawed as much as we could to get the budget balanced, and we were, call it eighty thousand bucks short. And so we went back to the schools and said, "Let's share it." Now, the schools are fifty-six percent of the budget, and we reduced our side by more than forty thousand dollars. So even though we are less than half of the budget, we took more than half of the pain, if you will. And when I wrote, when I submitted a letter last, late last week, making the formal request, which they've asked for, I did say, "If the governor's budget numbers come back in as the way they're projected, then we will share the wealth." And I put that in quotations, meaning those funds could be restored, and we would make sure that the schools benefited from the higher numbers from the governor that we're carrying. So that's why, I guess, like, again, it's not a budget-busting amendment. I just don't understand the schools, that, no one at the school department has asked me to restore the money. They've been saying, "We understand it's a tight year, and in support of the town, we will do this." And so I guess, if someone had made a specific request to you individually to restore the money, I, I would have liked to have known that.
But I, I guess the thing is, they voted on a budget. They have not voted to amend that budget.
So collaboration and discussion amongst the leaders of the, of the town and the schools is not really relevant?
But isn't, well, no, it is, but I mean, this is the point where we're approving the budget, right? I mean, we're, we're having to vote whether or not to reject their budget by thirty-nine thousand dollars. By making this amendment, I'm saying, "I'm not voting to reject their budget." I mean, if, if, if people feel differently, then, then we will reject their budget, and that will be that, you know? But I'm, I'm not voting to reject their budget.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. The only thing is, Alex, I would say is that the town manager hasn't received a formal request, nor the, has a Select Board, and the school committee knows that we're now debating the budget. We haven't received a formal request saying, "This is what we would like restored back to our budget." We haven't received anything. And I know you sent a communication to them, and you didn't receive, I'm assuming, a request back for the additional thirty-nine, forty thousand, whatever it is. So, in lieu of that, I, and since we haven't received the request for it, and they know what the town manager presented, because they were here, and I don't see why we would bump it up, and, you know, as the town manager said, that if the governor's numbers or the budget numbers come in better than what we're expecting, that there's money that'll be going back.
But I guess I'm not fine, because they, why do they need to ask again? I mean, they made a formal vote on a school committee budget. Why do they have to say one more time that they want that?
Because the difference is, they submit a budget to the town manager, it's now being voted on by the select board, it's entirely different process. And my feeling is that if they needed that forty thousand, if they had to have that forty thousand in the budget, then we would have gotten some communication from them, official communication from them.
There have been times in the past where the schools had not agreed with what the select board was deciding for the budget, and that was played out on town meeting floor. This is not one of those cases. And like you said, I...
Well, we don't, I mean, you don't know what's going to happen.
We don't know what's going to happen, but it would certainly be, it would belie the collaboration we've had so far. And again, when the state legislature approves a budget, it may completely nullify the need to have this question, whereas the OPEB contribution that we'd want to make in accordance with the policy would not be made, and then you'd be looking at possibly a free cash appropriation in the fall to restore the policy. I mean, like I said, again, I feel like this is a principled vote, not a financial vote, and that's fine, I mean, because it's not a budget buster.
Okay, any other discussion? Now, let's see, see if I got my...
This is an amendment.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's an amendment to the motion, so we're voting on the amendment only? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Okay, now we are back on the...
Primary motion.
On the primary motion?
I would move to remove from the budget line item for hiring plumbing and gas inspectors, forty thousand dollars, and place back the thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars for professional slash tech services inspectors. And this is under the Department of Inspection and Zoning Enforcement, because...
Wait, you want to get a second before you go into discussion? Okay, now you can have your discussion.
Okay, thank you. And the reason why I'm doing this is I'm, I guess, in the discussions that we've been having about this particular line item, it hasn't been clear to me what the impetus is. What I'm concerned about is that we're adding employees and increasing the potential OPEB liability, pension liability, healthcare costs. I understand that they're supposed to be halftime, it wouldn't be getting benefits, but I think the natural thing we'd probably see is that those hours would be creeping up, and that in fact, we would have employees receiving benefits. Seems like the system we have now works well. I've never heard any problems, and even in the presentation of this budget, there was no identification of a big problem.
Oh, wow, okay. I don't know who was first.
I think you got the buzz from Mark.
No, I don't care. Alex, I don't know if it was the prior meeting when you weren't here or not, but I just wanted to, over the, Paul Healy said one thing that convinced me that this was probably, as much as I'm not thrilled with hiring more people, was the right thing to do, and when he talked about the, I believe it was the Chapter Thirty-B requirements on that we would, now, there's a belief or a ruling, and I don't know which one it is, and Stephen will probably respond to that, that plumbing and electrical inspectors, we would need to bid those positions, which is very different from what we've done in the past, which is hire people who've kind of done it for the town for a while, and on and on and on. And I think that change, that if we had to bid it as opposed to having them in-house, convinced me. I will also say parenthetically, as somebody who had some work done in their house this year, I'm not convinced the current system is working, but that's a parenthetic comment.
Maureen?
I just want to thank you, Alex. I think it was very respectful and understandable for you to bring your motion one at a time and explain the reasons that you were putting this motion and the amendments on. So, even though I'll disagree with it because of the Thirty-Two-B, at least it showed that you were interested in discussion on the board and input in the possible changes that you think were important. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, I'm sorry. I'm happy to go through the justification again. I mean, the net effect of this is five hundred dollars, which again, doesn't feel much like a financial amendment. Feels really, quite honestly, you're proposing this simply because I'm proposing a change. And so that's the only thing I can make sense out of this. The short of it is, they would not, there would not be our creep, we would hold them to non-benefited rule, because that is a rule, that is a law, that they have to be below those number of hours. We do it with tons of positions all throughout the town workforce, we're very experienced at it. The building inspector who manages inspections feels like this would be a benefit to his department, so is there a problem? No, we do have to bid this out, and we've been going on a contracted service, but we really need to go through the bid process. We've held off because we were looking at making this change and making it town employees instead. And I actually heard from the, our Board of Health Director today, unprompted, saying that having these people as employees would be a benefit to her job, because if she goes in on, when she gets calls for unsanitary conditions, she sometimes sees issues with plumbing and electrical, and having someone on call that's already getting paid by a town to come in and report without having a permit, having to be polled, is help, would be helpful to her as well. And I didn't really realize that was an added benefit until today. And I think we can get a lot more, we can provide a lot higher level of service through our building department, which provides a high level of service now, but we can get even better by having these folks for nineteen hours a week each. So, you know, there's a whole bunch of different reasons why this is the right proposal, and I'm sorry that my previous answers haven't been satisfactory.
Okay, I think I publicly stated before, I support it. I don't know why we don't have our own inspectors. I've never been in a community, didn't have their own inspectors, but they've been larger communities. But I still think there's benefits that you haven't even brought out yet, Stephen. There's more benefits, it's just that there's continuity, there's education, there's a lot of side benefits to this. I think it also can increase the awareness of our own staff that are doing work, when they can go one-on-one and talk to people, because they're here. So there's a lot of growth to it for our community. And so I was going to, I support the original anyway. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Okay, no discussion, call, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. It was, okay. I won't try to get this vote. Alex, do you have any other motions?
Not on this one.
Okay. So now we're back to the primary motion, which was Article Three. Any other discussion regarding the primary motion, four vote? See, no hands, all in favor?
Can we just make sure we have all the numbers now?
Yes, we can.
That Mr. Sturzick has the numbers?
Yes, we can.
And I have no idea what the amendment was the past, to this day. So I could get that such a...
The only number that changed would be the sixty million dollar number, as far as I know.
Sixty million, three-eighty-eight, eight-eighty-eight would be the total budget, being basically reduced thirty-six-five out of a police vehicle would come out of there, and then we're basically transferring money after that within the budgetary line items, so the total doesn't adjust, but we're taking twenty thousand from police and fire overtime and transferring that to the reserve fund, and then we're taking eighteen-five of the thirty-six-five, adding that to nine thousand from the DPW director, eleven-nine from the police chief, and six-two from the fire chief, to go into debt service, and then the remaining eighteen thousand dollars to be discussed later to go into capital.
So this has all the things that Paul had in there, that's in this amendment. Okay, no other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
What was the vote?
Three-two.
Three-two or four-one?
No.
Four-one?
Who voted?
Voted against it.
You and I?
No, I voted for.
Oh, you voted for? Okay, then it was a three-one.
Four-to-one.
Oh, four-to-one. I voted the same favor as I did on the original amendment, because that amendment was included in the budget. Okay.
I moved to two, Article Four, in the warrant.
Second for discussion.
All right, discussion.
Yeah, one discussion. And we talked about, there's obviously vehicles in here, and we talked about an analysis of lease versus purchase, and if something came to fruit with a lease, there's obviously going to be money left over in the capital plan budget for some other purposes, but, and I'm hoping that by the time we're somewhere done near town meeting, we'd have a yes or no, or whether it's feasible or not. So, I mean, we have the potential to...
Is this H-28 you're talking about?
Well, in Article Four, we have, there's three vehicles that we asked to have a lease versus purchase analysis on, which is the...
I thought it was just one.
No, it was...
Two.
And I thought it was two.
Backhoe and the big dump.
Right, those were the only two I thought it was.
Yeah, the one-ton, we don't...
No, one-ton.
On its face, we know that the one-ton is the least. Because it was, because that truck gets used twelve months a year.
Okay. So potentially, before town meeting, we might, if there was something that was...
I know Mike is working on it.
Feasible to lease, and we might be adjusting this somewhere else, so...
So you're...
My motion was just to accept it as it is.
Okay, but...
As is, as is.
My only discussion was that we have those two things, that it could be, we might have to adjust, if it was fruitful to lease for the town, then we might have to adjust these numbers at town meeting or afterwards, or at fall town meeting.
So, Paul, that sort of goes to the amendment that I had circulated. So I, this is, here, I brought paper, in case. So...
Oh, wait a minute, you've got all kinds of stuff here.
A shopping list?
Is this the one that you just brought me through?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. In private, was it?
No, no, that, I had circulated that as well. So, so my motion relates to the highway dump truck with plow, which is one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-three-hundred, and rather than read it, I'll just, my motion will be what I wrote.
She can have.
And so the idea being that the, there's a directive to evaluate the leasing option for that big dump truck, and that the one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars will be allocated contingent upon the select board decisions on whether to lease or purchase the truck. And if we decide on the lease option, then the funds for the lease will come out of the one-hundred-and-sixty-two, then the remainder would be directed to the pavement reconstruction budget.
Is this a motion to amend?
Correct.
Alex, just if I could, is that going to be, you're moving to amend the warrant, so that becomes part of the warrant article? Because what we're, the motion was to accept the warrant, and I hope that, you know, I support what you're thinking, but I'm not sure it's part of the warrant. I think it's a separate discussion of the select board.
The directive that came out of the subcommittee was, they were not going to withhold the appropriation, they were going to recommend the appropriation subject to a lease versus buy analysis, which takes some doing, because I think they understood that it takes some level of analysis and research. And truthfully, I mean, the select board makes funding decisions through their budget, but purchasing decisions are made by the town, by the town departments, the town manager, or the purchasing director. And so, you know, the decision on lease versus buy is something that we would go through and then make a recommendation through our budget. And I agreed, agree with the subcommittee's approach, which is appropriate the funds if we need, because if we need to buy, when there's, you can't just drive down to Belize and pick one up. They take months to get. And so if we need to, and the truck that's being replaced has a plow route, and so, you know, July first comes around, and we're going to purchase the truck, it needs some lead time to have it on hand here for the winter. If in the meantime, we decide that a leasing thing is the right option, then we can go with that. But to withhold the funds now would, I think, would hurt DPW operations, especially snow operations, or certainly, it's another risk order, have the potential of hurting operations.
No, he's, he's talking about what is going to happen if you can lease with the money. In other words, if it's leased, what are we going to direct the money to do?
And I think that's a decision...
That's a vote down the line, after the analysis has been presented, certainly.
Alex, I agree with the town manager. I don't think that we should vote on what to do with the money unless we, until we know, and at the same time, we know we're doing the money. I mean, to my...
No, but I think it's pertinent, because people at town meeting are going to look at that.
Right, and so if, you know, I would look at this and say, if you want to do what I think you want to do, you add to the bottom of this, where it says, or take any other action relative thereto. Before that phrase, you say, with the release of funds for the DPW highway dump truck with plow, one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-three-hundred, and backhoe, you know, forty-four thousand, to be, to be, you know, contingent upon a purchase-lease agreement, or to be, you know, released by the town manager based on the results of a, you know, buy-lease agreement. So the people in town can understand that money is, I don't know what the right way, contingently being allocated based on, which is exactly what we want to do, based on a buy-lease agreement. I'm not sure we even have to do that part, but if that's what you want to do, that's the way I do it.
It all goes back to the treasury if it doesn't, I mean, it all goes back to the general fund. If it doesn't get spent, it can be reallocated some other way. I think it was just the select board book and do a transfer.
Actually, the warrant article sends it back to the capital stabilization fund if it's not used automatically.
Right, but I would imagine that by May twelfth, we're going to have an idea of whether leasing works or doesn't work for us.
Hopefully so.
Right. So I would imagine that we're going to go to town meeting and amend this article if a lease is beneficial to the, on either one of those vehicles. So if it is, we would then go to town meeting and make an amendment that would say, you know, with all those numbers, we're going to move forty-four thousand from the backhoe over to X, or whatever the net number is. So I, you know, between now and then, something else could blow up in the capital plan that might need forty thousand in funding, but I, but my feeling is, by the time this town meeting comes around, we're going to know whether we're leasing or purchasing.
That's the hope.
Right, so I would think that we could take care of this at the, prior to town meeting, meaning going into town meeting, we would know we would need to make an amendment or not.
Right.
Make it on the floor.
I mean, I guess part of, I mean, part of the reason I'm making this motion is, I'm sensing that the town manager isn't, like, completely behind this idea, you know, and that I'm asking...
Part of I completely agree with the subcommittee did not come across to you.
No, no. I mean, because my understanding of it was that the subcommittee had brought up the idea of leasing, and then two weeks later, we weren't any further ahead on the lease option. So, you know, we're sort of having to deal with this contingency. And I guess the other, you know, point of this is to, you know, direct where the money should go otherwise. I mean, I think that's important.
Yeah, there are two questions, and I think the record should clearly state that there was cooperation with the town manager in this subtask force. They were really in agreement on this, sincerely. The only thing that was in agreement was, it's what you brought up, because I don't think they got to the discussion, is what do you do if you don't buy the truck? What do you do with the money that's allocated? And that's just, and that's just what they basically said now.
There's probably five opinions on that.
But you know, this is another example of, all these motions, I just, very insulting. I mean, whether you're insulting the police chief, or the town manager...
Wait, wait, I said this around. I said this around.
No, I appreciate that, but it's the fact that you're saying, we've got to, we can't trust him that he's going to follow through on the lease.
No, I don't, I don't think that's what Alex is saying this time. I think Alex is saying, he said, I want the money to go into the pavement management if it doesn't go into the truck. That's pretty clear what he's saying. But I think Mr. Santinella made an excellent point. This is, we're going to have resolution on this between now and then.
But see, the town manager sort of was more equivocal. He said, you know, I hope so.
I'm not actually preparing the analysis, I'm not sure, I haven't had a chance to talk to Mike. I know he's working on it. Like I said, I know it's complicated, but I don't think it's so complicated. I just, I'm not doing it myself. Others are doing it, and I can't promise what others need to deliver.
I think, I think there was a clear indication from this board that there should be support for an amendment on the town floor. I may be speaking way beyond where they're at, but it didn't mean, Mr. Santinella brought up the fact that we'll know by then.
And I believe in our conversations, because Mike Rabel was at that meeting that we talked about lease versus purchase, and said he was going to work on that, so...
He's calling the guy from Hertz. I don't know whether, I haven't checked with him today. I know he's working on it.
But to your point, the money does need to be put to a good cause, if it's not used to that vehicle at that point. So I feel comfortable that it will go to an amendment on the town floor.
All right, well, I mean, if that's the consensus of the board, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Do you have any other amendments, Alex?
I do, and the, and I guess, before I make my motion, I want to ask Paul Sturzick, sort of, if I'm correct in thinking that we have freed up forty-seven thousand dollars from our prior action of...
You have freed up eighteen thousand dollars from your prior actions of this motion.
All right, so, see, that's why I was asking before, because I thought by directing the chief's salary and half of the car to debt service for Crestview, because you had already told us that forty-seven thousand dollars of this capital budget was forty-seven thousand for Crestview. So I'm thinking, if we're paying for that debt service for Crestview through the previous motion, we now have freed up forty-seven thousand dollars.
And again, that holds true with some future action of the board about Article Number Eight, and I'm not making that same assumption.
Right.
You're right, but again, I'm not jumping to the future. I'm only saying, what you did in Article Three is eighteen thousand dollars.
All right, so, all right, so I guess my motion is going to be, sort of with the idea that we are going to approve Article Eight, and so, to my mind, that means we have forty-seven thousand dollars plus eighteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and I would move to allocate that to sidewalk reconstruction. dollars, and I would move to allocate that to sidewalk reconstruction.
Sir, a second please, will you?
One second, 'cause I got a couple of questions.
Okay, Alex, could you please read your motion again?
Yes, the, the motion is to, uh, I guess, increase the item for sidewalk reconstruction by eighteen thousand dollars, two fifty, plus forty-seven thousand dollars.
Sixty-five thousand, two fifty.
Would the funds to come from where?
Because the idea that we just freed up eighteen thousand dollars from, from half of the car, from Paul's motion that's passed, and that forty-seven, and Paul's motion also paid for the debt service on the Crestview project. So that forty-seven thousand dollars in Article Eight, that was gonna come from the general fund to pay for the debt service on Crestview, can be used for capital, which we would use for these, this purpose.
You got all that, Paul?
I'm thinking.
Well, I'll make sure that this is correct.
I mean, I, I was just trying to say back what you said to me, Paul.
Right, right, but, I'm just thinking of the mechanics of it. If you're, you're gonna add, you said forty-seven, or fifty-five, two?
No, eighteen thousand, two fifty from the car.
Well, eighteen thousand, two fifty, but, okay, eighteen thousand, two fifty, okay.
Right, from the car, which we just freed up with Paul's motion, and then the forty-seven thousand dollars that, um, we don't have to expend for Article, because we've already, we've already, we've already paid for it with Paul's motion.
So, and I, so Article Eight would then have no money appropriated, is what you're saying, is a future vote?
Well, or, or I guess you could-
That's what he's saying.
Yeah. Well, I mean, but, but we've already appropriated it, but by-
But not from raise and appropriate.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it'll work, Alex. You're actually putting the, um, well, again, you're putting fifty-five, well, maybe we should go over one more time, just so I'm sure.
Okay, so it's two, so we would increase the item of sidewalk reconstruction of one eighty-six, one hundred, plus sixty-five thousand, two fifty. The eighteen, two fifty coming from the car, the forty-seven thousand dollars that we were going, that you had set aside for, in the capital budget, 'cause you told us that that came, that's how you came up with that capital budget, is just to, um, use that for sidewalk, because we've already paid for the Crestview.
Um, I, I think it's all gonna work with one exception.
Okay.
I think Paul's number had eighteen-five that was going into the debt service.
Correct.
And now Alex is changing that down to eighteen, two fifty.
Right, so you only have eighteen thousand left, Alex, you don't have eighteen, two fifty.
Okay, all right, so then it's eighteen, so then, then my motion is sixty-five even then.
Right, okay.
Okay. So, I mean, I mean, I don't know how much more I need to elaborate on, I think we all recognize that we need to spend more on sidewalks, the amount that we're allocating on this budget is actually less than half of what requested, so this sixty-five thousand dollars just goes some distance to getting us closer to what we should be paying, and I think your point, Richard, is that even what's been requested isn't sufficient.
Right, it's not.
So, so this is, this just, you know, gets us going more in the right direction.
Okay, so we got a motion that was second in discussion, Maria.
And so, what I'm trying to step back is understand what members of this board, since we really haven't had a full discussion, feel that the priorities of the budget are, and I'm looking that we're cutting public safety equipment, we're cutting, uh, public safety overtime, we're cutting in order to put more money into pavement, even though we have an increase in our, um, Chapter Ninety Fund, substantial increase. And I, when we start making those type of priorities and decisions in the budget, those are goals within the budget that should have been discussed in a general way, rather than individuals deciding, that's when they're cutting, and we're also cutting any possible salaries for our public sal-, uh, any future public safety people. So I don't understand how the priorities of this budget have been put together, and so I totally disagree with any of this movement that's going on, because I think we're being unfair to public safety.
Just for clarification's sake, though, is, most of those decisions, as you just alluded to, have already been voted on?
They've already been voted on, that's right.
Maria, my, my interpretation is a little different from yours. My interpretation is that we started out with a policy that said, "We're going to increase our capital expenditures this year."
And we did.
And we then originally, to the tune of six hundred, forget about Chapter Ninety money, town raise and appropriate money was six hundred thousand for pavement, then four hundred and fifty thousand for pavement, and four hundred thousand for sidewalks. That's what we thought we were appropriating. During the process, the town manager's budget reduced those in order to put money in other operations. I see part of what we're doing as working to restore those by, yes, making, making priorities in what I'll call the operating side of the budget, as opposed to the capital side of the budget. But it's not that, you know, we're, we're now funding capital above where we thought we were gonna fund capital when we determined early in this year that we were gonna put together and increase the capital budget. We are now funding it closer to that level.
I wanna, I wanna clarify one thing, Maria. I put, we reduced those line ends in the capital plan, it put them, except for eighteen thousand, into other capital, not operations, Mark, I wanna be clear on that. So we didn't underfund the capital plan other than eighteen thousand, plus we had the two forty-two from Chapter Ninety, which is the only reason I thought, in this given year, it would be okay to do that, to balance out the budget. So it didn't go into operations, it went back into capital.
And we also increased by policy our capital investment this year, plus we had increase in Chapter Ninety Funds, but the decision, I, I just see it as, we're, we're turning around and we're making these, this, this actual priority decision as a board, and it wasn't, it was only coming from individual members, and we never discussed that. So, as you've said, those cuts have already been made, but I just wanna make it clear that these, there were some priority decisions that were being made by members of this board that was never discussed as the whole board.
Okay. Any more discussion?
No.
Okay, um, so we have, Alex, your amendment is up.
Correct.
Okay, uh, voting on the amendment, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Okay, now we still got, uh, you have another amendment?
No.
Oh, I thought you were speaking again.
No, I said we have the original.
We have the primary motion, and that was to, uh, accept, uh, Article Four as written, I guess with the amendments that have been made now. Uh, any more discussion required on that, Alex, on this item?
No.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Oh, I, go ahead, Paul, I'm sorry.
I move to approve Article Five of the warrant. Second.
Discussion?
Can I just read it for a second?
Just on Article Five and Six, I tried to clean up a lot of old bond issues that we had outstanding, so I was cleaning up our books, that's where all those other small amounts have, have come from, with the residual amount coming out of the retained earnings account, needed to fully fund the projects. They're all completed projects with unexpended balances.
And for those of you at home, it's just administrative details with, with the accounts, I don't know, do you-
Go ahead.
Do you wanna read it for the record?
I, I know, I, I just have a, a suggestion, and maybe it needs to be an amendment, but is it possible, and I was gonna do this for several of them, as we read it, it says, "Vote to transfer from water retained earnings some money," and then, as you said, Mr. Pesterzic, "Take some money from unexpended funds," and I just wondered if it, we shouldn't say at the end, "For the purposes of completing the Maple Terrace main upgrade in Loop for a total amount of," and I only say that so that people know what the total amount of the project is, which is nothing more than the sum of all the parts. Does anybody have any objections, and, and should I offer that as an amendment then?
Do we need that as an amendment?
Sure, well, I mean, you're changing the wording.
Yeah, I, I, and I don't know what that total is, but I, you know, 'cause I haven't done the total, but I-
We would have it in, in the capital budget, quite honestly, it's-
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Well, I, 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 I move that we amend Article Five to include the total amount of the project.
Second.
And, and this is just, um, we do have, just, it wasn't in the version you got, but we do have explanations from the, uh, from DPW that will be on the draft, on the version that goes out, I wanted to say, we do have those now, they weren't in your version, I apologize.
Okay, any more-
For the record, it'd be ninety thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars.
Any more discussion for the record, or for the amendment? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, uh, now we'll vote on the original article. Uh, any more discussion on the original article? All in favor? All opposed?
You wanna make that motion to include the total of the project? I move to approve Article Six in the warrant article, in the warrant, um, as written with the addendum to include the total value of all the projects.
Three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
So we don't have to do an amendment.
Did you get Yim's email today, though? He made a change to the, to the amount.
I did not get Yim's email today.
All right, well, he's gonna change it, I just had to add the total value of the project, so we don't have to-
Yeah, the town engineer made, and I haven't had a chance to discuss them, but he made some adjustments to those numbers, a difference of twelve thousand dollars on the Ellington Streets Sewer Lines, but I think he double counted it in his amendment, so I need to talk to him about, so those numbers may shift a little bit, that's all right.
Ellington?
Or the sewer line, yeah. What's that?
We're not doing Ellington, though, are we?
No, it's from the, from the funds, he says he needs the twelve grand from Ellington.
So there's no longer gonna be twelve thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, forty-seven cents.
Right, right, those, okay.
He says he still needs the twelve thousand from the Ellington Street.
The, the, the three hundred and thirty-two is still the total project, but the, the twelve thousand, one forty-eight, forty-seven is out, and the amount for retained earnings would be the two sixty-two plus.
Yeah, he had said that, he had that right then, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any discussion?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you, I thought it was seconded. Okay, no more discussion, all in favor? All opposed?
I move to approve Article Seven of the warrant for sewer lines on Hazardville Road.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor? Okay, another discussion.
Yeah, I, I just have a question, if, if, we're, borrow the sum of four oh four, Paul, our sewer retained earnings, have we done anything in this warrant to pull down a little bit the sewer retained earnings, which we're starting to-
Just pulled two sixty-two in the prior article.
I guess it's pretty close to the half a million.
Okay, which is, which now gets us down close to half a million?
Uh, we have, uh, sewer is six hundred and twenty-one.
Okay, so we're below, okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, for what it's worth, Moody's suggests building up retained earnings and the utilities as well, and I know you like to spend them down, but, and now granted they're in the business of rating you so you can borrow money, but it's worth noting that those have an impact on our rating, it's fine for now, but I'm just saying, for future years, we gotta bear that in mind.
Okay, any other discussion on Article Seven? All in favor? All opposed?
I make a motion to approve Article Eight on the town management, to approve Article Eight for work on Crestview Circle. Is it the town manager's?
On the town manager's.
It's gonna have to be amended.
Yeah.
That the words "to further raise and appropriate the sum of forty-seven thousand dollars or greater or lesser sum, for the purposes of paying a first year's debt service on the authorization be taken out."
Thank you. I move what Mr. Pesterzic just said. I move the amendment that Mr. Pesterzic just said.
We're just striking that, right, from, and, further, so Crestview Circle period. Uh, or take any action relative thereto.
All right, so I like to, I like to redraw my motion so I can make it again.
Okay, thank you, okay. You, you made the primary amendment, no, no.
Actually, before you do that, can I, I guess-
I'm just gonna, I, I drew my motion, I'm gonna redo it with the period.
Okay, okay.
Original motion's withdrawn.
But, but I guess, the, the question I'm gonna raise is whether we really need to change it. I mean, because the, the way I'm thinking about it, Paul, is that by Paul's motion on Article Three, we've, we've already funded that debt service. So, I mean, so we are raising and appropriating that.
In, in Article Three, you are, yes.
Oh, I see, oh, okay, so you-
So you're not gonna do it again?
Right.
Okay, understood.
So I make a motion to approve Article Eight in the warrant, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars or greater or lesser sum for the purposes of replacing the culvert on Crestview Circle or take any act, any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Discussion?
See, none all in favor? Oh, actually, amendment. So-
You have an amendment?
Yeah, so this is what we were discussing before, about how we're gonna reallocate those Chapter Ninety Funds. So the amendment would be to reallocate the two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in Chapter Ninety Funds that would've gone to the Crestview Cir-, Crestview Circle culvert as follows, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for pavement preservation, and forty thousand dollars for sidewalk reconstruction. So remember, we discussed this, we had to, we had to do it at this time, because this reallocation was contingent upon Article Eight passing.
You got me, what?
No, 'cause we changed, you changed the capital plan-
Yeah.
-before, I think what happened was we ended up making, at the time we said that, the capital plan was different than when you ended up changing.
No, but this is Chapter Ninety Funds, the capital plan had to do with general funds. I think it was done, wasn't it?
I don't know.
I, I, I think Article Eight is fine without the amendment, and maybe that's David needs, maybe needs to go on Article Nine, when you're referring to Chapter Ninety money now.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think, I think Paul's right, I think how I do it is, 'cause we don't say, we don't know the number for FY sixteen, but we know we have the nu-, the two forty-two in hand for FY fifteen. You may wanna make a note at the end of Article Nine to say, "Including two hundred and forty-two thousand received in FY fifteen to be expended in the following manner," or something like that.
Right, that's, yeah, okay, right.
Okay, okay, I'll redraw my amendment.
Okay. All in favor of motion, uh, of Article Eight? Article Nine, Paul?
So we're gonna make an amendment on here?
Yeah, sounds like it.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve Article Nine with the amendment, "See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of money from the state highway improvements on the authority of national laws, Chapter Ninety, or any other applicable laws, and to authorize the select board, if necessary, to apply for, accept, and borrow in anticipation of state aid for such projects to be funded, any action relative thereto," and what's the amendment then?
And with the allocation of the expected funds to be, um, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for pavement preservation, and forty thousand dollars for sidewalk reconstruction.
Six fifty and forty?
Correct.
Those are jive numbers, those work?
As long as the check comes in, to that amount or greater.
Alex, I have a question for you.
Hey.
Why is, why is that different from currently, you know, we're not allocating the FY sixteen Chapter Ninety Funds for any particular use, why wouldn't you just add to that to include the supplemental funds from FY fifteen?
But, but we're, we're voting on how the money's gonna be spent.
But we, we're not voting on how the chap-, the FY sixteen money's spent, why are we voting on how the FY fifteen money should be spent? We've never voted on how the FY sixteen money's spent.
Oh, wait a minute, I, I guess I misunderstood then, I thought this Chapter Ninety money had to do with both the FY sixteen and the FY fifteen.
Not unless you say it.
Sorry, two forty-two is FY fifteen, in hand, today. Um, we don't, I didn't even think we even need a vote to spend it.
I think you, I think you do, quite honestly, I think you do, 'cause you always needed an appropriation.
Oh, right.
With the Chapter Ninety, we don't really have an appropriation or a town meeting vote for the two forty-two, so I think it's best to make it inclusive of both fiscal years.
Well, at the time, the ti-, at the time we took the vote, the two forty-two was included in the number approved by the legislature. Um, and then it just didn't get, it just didn't get, the legislature approved that the governor signed it and didn't sign the, it was a matter of law, was that, but that he just didn't do the bond notices, I don't know if you guys remember that, and he kind of pulled it? Um, I, I don't care one way or the other, if you wanna clarify that we got this money, I just think you're right, Mark, we don't really direct the funds that way, they just get handled as part of the capital program that gets done, but if you feel strongly, Alex, you want to direct funding, um, again, I would say, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a some- to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money, um, from state highway improvements under authority of master's Chapter Ninety or any other applicable laws, comma, including two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in FY fifteen, Chapter Ninety money has been received, um, and then take any other money or action thereto, and then say, action thereto, period. The two hundred and forty-two thousand shall be expended.
No, no, but the whole amount is, I mean, we're.
But we don't do, that's not how the town, that's, this is how this goes every single year. This is how the town meeting articles are done every year.
We never have the actual figure.
The problem is you can't allocate money when you don't know exactly how much is coming in. We're guessing it's four fifty, but it might be more, it might be less. That's why you can't allocate it and split it.
Okay, alright.
And another thing is, you really need to have some flexibility in, to address needs like, quite honestly, the spraying potholes in asphalt are probably gonna be a higher priority than sidewalks, because of the condition of the roads from the wintertime.
In all, in all likelihood, we're gonna get special funding for that.
Well, hopefully so, but I mean, you wanna have some level of flexi, you don't wanna prescribe funding when the needs in the field may not match.
So, so I guess then, I mean, this whole business on, on the spreadsheet of how we're alloc, I mean, that could be completely undone?
On the capital plan?
No, on the Chapter Ninety funds. I mean, because what you, what you've said was four hundred and seventy-one thousand was gonna be for pavement, um, on your sheet, and, I mean.
That's a projection, and we make those proj, we make the recommendations projections.
But I understand, but I guess what I'm getting at is that the act, so if we do nothing, then the actual allocation could be something quite different.
Depending on the need.
I mean, you gotta spend it, and you can only spend it on what Chapter Ninety money can be spent on. You can't spend it on, uh, you know, on, on, on travel, you can't spend it on.
Buy a truck with it. Actually, I don't know if you can buy a truck with it.
Yeah, we did buy a truck.
Yeah, you can't buy a truck, yeah, yeah. But you're basically.
I understand that, and what I'm, and what I'm trying to do is have the select board allocate it between pavement and sidewalks.
And I, I'm afraid to micromanage that, because we don't know what we're going to face when all the snow melts. I mean, there could be a lot more that's gotta go into pavement than sidewalks, and maybe we'll discover that we've followed the needs and we can then move more to sidewalks, but I think.
We're talking about over a million dollars.
Right.
That's just gonna be spent however.
We have plans. The plans roll out.
No.
Spent however, however, you need to spend it to maintain the town.
However, the town manager decides to spend, or, or members of the DPW decide to spend.
We're better off having the select board dictate that.
Right, we're, we're making priorities. I mean, you know, that's sort of a value judgment of pavement versus sidewalks, right?
Yeah, just put the motion up.
So what is the motion? We never really settled on language.
I didn't finish my motion, so I'm, I'm gonna withdraw that since I didn't finish it.
Because I didn't get that. I'd like to propose the motion, because I think the town ought to, quote unquote, reauthorize money, they, even though they did it before, and it doesn't hurt to reauthorize it. And I, and I would move that we, we approve Article Nine with, with the addition of, so that it now reads, see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the state highway improvement under authority of mass general law, Chapter Ninety, including funds received in FY sixteen and two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in funds already received for FY fifteen, or any other applicable laws, and to authorize the select board, if necessary, to apply for, accept, and borrow in anticipation of state aid for such projects.
Can I just ask, can I wordsmith that a little tiny bit?
Sure.
Two hundred and forty-two thousand, that was received subsequent to the town meeting approval of Chapter Ninety funds in FY fifteen, because you said.
You have Rebecca write that, now.
Second.
Second discussion.
It's just.
Because it sounds like, because if people are paying attention, they'll say, well, didn't we vote for this last year? And technically did, but not really.
Discussion, relevance of the article.
I would, I would move, and I think this language, with, and at the end, say, with the allocation of said funds to be ninety percent toward pavement preservation and ten percent for sidewalk reconstruction.
I, I.
Is there a second?
I don't, I don't accept that amendment yet. Let's pass one amendment at a time.
Yours was the original motion.
Yours is the original.
So he can put in amendment if he gets a second to it.
That was an amendment to the amendment. Is there a second?
I'm gonna second for discussion, because I got a question for the town manager.
Okay, discussion, on the amendment.
Can I ask a question? When we look at, when we look at Chapter Ninety money, if you don't, can I ask? I'm sorry, you were talking, I didn't interrupt.
I wasn't trying to, I was just talking to myself.
Did you get the answer you want?
I, I think, I think I did.
Chapter Ninety money, there's obviously applicable rules and laws that we can spend it on, obviously, and like we talked about, you could probably finagle a truck out of it, and I think we, we've done that in the past. But generally, can we talk about what Chapter Ninety money is acceptable to spend on? If we could, because it pertains to the reallocation.
Generally, roads, bridges, culverts, sidewalks, guardrail, things like that. And so what will end up happening is, um, and one of the reasons why it's, you really wanna limit it in a very prescriptive way, is that you may have a sewer project like Edgewood, and, um, you know, the water mains are all replaced, and that's a water project. But the resurfacing of the road, maybe, and I don't know if specifically if it is or not in this case, but the resurfacing of the road could be done with Chapter Ninety, and the sidewalks could be done with Chapter Ninety. And so we, we frequently do, right? We fre, we, we take Chapter Ninety money and complete projects, whereas water and sewer won't pay, they'll pay for the trench, but not the overlay. And so we'll fold, and so we'll deploy Chapter Ninety money in a strategic way, it's not just all one lump sum at one thing, and that's why, if you say ninety percent on pavement and ten percent on sidewalks, we may have a guardrail project. In fact, we have some guardrails scheduled for the Cooley Brook that's gonna go along with the state Cooley Brook project, and that's, I believe it's gonna be Chapter Ninety money or, or is that general fund? I'm not sure how he's got it allocated, but. So, but it's, it's, we use it very effectively, either do our own separate paving or supplement existing projects. Is that, long answer to your question?
No, no, and that's part of my, thank you, because part of what I was gonna say is that, when you look at our water and sewer projects that we have on the agenda, that's road pavement that we don't count as road pavement, so to speak, you know what I mean? It's not a road project, it's a, like in Edgewood, it's a water project, but that road's gonna be paved. So we are taking that road technically off the system of needing, you know, new asphalt over the next fifteen years, for example. So I think there's a, I think there is a lot more money going to road, road work, because when you had the water and sewer projects, that, that, the road's being refurbished, so.
So the point is, we're gonna cut, you wanna cut pavement?
No.
No, my point is that I think pavement is actually higher than what we're seeing on paper.
So we're actually putting more than a million dollars into pavement this year?
Yeah, I think if you, I mean, if you look at water and sewer projects, there's pavement on top of that, that, you know, however much that is.
But usually the pavement component's covered by Chapter Ninety.
Right, but I'm, okay, so that's, it is part of it.
You can also use for engineering studies, get rid of tip programmers.
More uses for that, and you can buy vehicles if they're in, in the operation, it's legal to do it, it's, so I didn't want to leave that here.
Yeah, there are uses, but I think how we use it is, is good, um, and I think, I think we need some flexibility, depending on needs in the field.
And the design issue, I think, is a big one.
Right, there's enough laws and regulations around the obligation of those dollars, that I, I would be, I would be very restrictive, Alex, to try to go ninety, ten, I think, it's, I just don't think that's our game, honestly. I think, yeah, to get precise down on it, I think there's gotta be a lot of management flow back and forth, because.
I don't know, I mean, you know, we could come back with something quite, I mean, the reason why I'm saying it, it's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
And this is, you know, in, in setting priorities is what this budget's all about, and what we're supposed to be doing. I mean, I guess, you know, you know, one, you know, I guess one thing that would be, you know, that I wish I had asked for, or anybody had asked for, was, you know, in the budget, in, in the other parts of the budget, we see what's been expended last, or during the current year, we don't, I don't see that for the capital. I don't know how it came out for paving last year. I know what we voted on, so, I mean, to me, it's just a way of, of steering toward, I think, a priority that everybody agrees with.
I'm not tis agreeing with you, I just don't. I, I don't wanna overcorrect for a problem that's not there. And I don't think we sense that we have a problem, and, and I agree with you, we need more feedback coming back, because I think the town manager's looking through his stuff right now, because I think he understands too, that there should be a lot of feedback coming back on how the funds are being distributed, but I, I don't think it's appropriate for the select board to try to manage percentage-wise distribution of those funds.
Anything I say is, Alex, is the monthly reports from the DPW have the updates on the capital plan and how much it costs, and, so we do, we provide those updates on a monthly basis.
Right, and I, once a year, it'd be nice to see an analysis.
Sure.
Just like we talked, it's just a one, once a year, a completion report.
I mean, it's tough to kinda add up a bunch of different things.
Yeah, because there's a lot of stuff going on that goes by the wayside, just so many things going by. Okay, uh.
Alex's amendment.
Alex, it was your amendment, I sense it's gonna fail, do you wanna withdraw?
Oh, we can call it.
Okay. Um, no more discussion, all in favor of Alex's amendment, I guess was, was to take the funds ninety, ten, ninety percent, ten percent, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Okay, original question.
Now, the original, the original amendment is up. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I move to approve Article Ten of the warrant, which establishes a revolving fund for the school department for someone.
Vending machines.
Yeah, for vending machines. This, Paul, this takes care of the, every year of going through that?
It's a requirement every year if they're gonna expend that money, I think they are eliminating the vending machines, but they have prior year money that they need authorized to be expended.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Last vote was five zero, Alex.
No, it wasn't, yeah, it was, it was five zero.
The main motion was, was five zero. The amendment was one four.
Any discussion on this? This is something we do every year.
Who seconded it?
Mark.
Mark. Seeing no discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I move to approve Article Eleven, which is a Community Preservation Act article.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing no, seeing no discussion, all in favor? All opposed?
Um, just for education purposes, before town meeting, could we have them come in and go over their particular article, so people are, you know, aware of what's going on? Pardon?
I thought they did. Didn't Steve Weiss come and present the projects before?
For this year, for this thing?
I thought they, I don't know, I thought they had.
They haven't been in here.
Well, Steve and I had that discussion today, and I.
I thought they did.
I thought they did, and.
They were here for the fall, for the fall town meeting. I'm just, I, my, my only point was that, so people can see it on TV, because I mean.
I guess maybe because I went over it, I don't know.
Yeah. I have a clear image of that happening, but I could be wrong.
I asked an exact question today, and we could not factually remember, and we figured they must've been in.
Not, yeah, not these, definitely for the fall town meeting, but.
Yeah, because Steve Weiss has been in touch with me, and I told him that, I said, there doesn't appear to be too many questions coming up.
I just moved between now and May twelfth, because you could just have them then to go over the articles for the public, it's not to debate them.
Maybe they could just do a, a LCTV thing, we have a lot of stuff on the agenda, can we have time?
We're in HD.
Well, you're in HD.
Actually, the meetings where they went through all this are online.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, people can go watch them and.
Okay. Alright, so I'm sorry.
Their meetings aren't, aren't.
They have them here?
Yeah, these meetings are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so we have Article, I made a motion for Article Eleven.
Okay.
I second it.
No, we've already passed. We've, so I make a motion to approve Article Twelve, which is another CP, Community Preservation article.
I second it.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
I move to approve Article Thirteen, again, another Community Preservation article.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I move to approve Article Fourteen, which is a Community Preservation article.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I move to approve Article Fifteen, which is also a Community Preservation article.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
I moved to.
All opposed?
I'm sorry.
No, all in favor.
I move to approve Article Sixteen, which is also a Community Preservation article.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I didn't get that money.
Pardon?
We don't make for that money.
I, oops, I move to approve Article Seventeen, which is also Community Preservation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Oops, lost my articles here. I move to approve Article Eighteen of the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one quick thing, you made, you asked Jim Jones about, or was it President, Mr. President Hand about this?
Yeah.
The, the meeting was online, and I did, the guy did a PowerPoint, the people who were advocating for this, and it was interesting, I was in the room watching, so I would go back and refer you to the meeting, and I'll check it out.
Any discussion on Article Eighteen? All in favor?
Did you vote? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm in favor, yeah. I move to approve Article Nineteen for Community Preservation.
Second.
Any discussion on Nineteen?
I have, it's not on Nineteen, Article Nineteen. Stephen, I, I understand there are several fun, or Paul, there's several funds, sub-funds with, excuse me, within Community Preservation. Why can't we lump these together so that we save an article to fund from the Community Preservation, you know, undesignated fund the following, and fund from Community Preservation historic, the, rather than?
Uh, we could normally, these are written by the members of the Community Preservation, and that's where the historic we have come in, but it's not to say that we could revise them.
I mean, I, again, we'd end up, instead of fifteen articles, we'd end up with three, or four, maybe.
But then the problem you have is town meeting doesn't get to vote on them individually.
Or they'd have to amend.
Or they have to amend it on the floor, strip them out.
And, and look what we do with capital, the, a capital budget that's large, I mean, it's, it's good for the capital budget, it seemed to me that it oughta work with, I understand.
I can take that with town council and CPA, we can certainly do that.
Just, I mean, just, just what it does on town meeting floor, same kinda thing.
Okay, any more discussion on Nineteen? All in favor?
I move to approve Article Twenty of Community Preservation article.
Second.
Any discussion on Article Twenty? Seeing none, all in favor?
I move to approve Article Twenty-One of the warrant, which is Community Preservation.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I move to approve Article 22, which is also Community Preservation.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
I move to approve Article 23, which is Water and Sewer Bylaw. Rephrase it.
I second that one for certain.
Discussion?
So, the, the effect of this, is this to, I guess I'm not sure what the effect is.
The effect of it is to give the Water and Sewer Commissioners, which are us, the flexibility of constructing a water and, a water usage fee structure that's more like the sewer usage fee structure, or whatever makes sense, based on potentially both a fixed and variable element to the fee structure.
Okay, this, we've discussed this before.
We've discussed this a few times before.
Right.
And, and my argument for, for the vote for this is, has to do with, people don't use water for four months and end up with zero bill, but yet we still have the cost of, the fixed cost of our water system.
Right, and, and I think-
But this doesn't, this doesn't imply we will make the change.
Right, right.
It just gives the Select Board the flexibility.
The current language does not allow us to make the change.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think this is, this is a, we've talked a lot about different things we can do with our water rate structure, including you've mentioned a tiered rate. To really get to any kind of meaningful, any system, you have to correct this kind of defect in our by law.
Well, no, you wouldn't, tiered would be fine. It's, it's having the fixed rate component of it, which I'm not in favor of, because you're insulating people, at least to some degree, you're disconnecting the charge from what they're using. And, you know, I think I use the example of, you know, a flat rate for long-distance service versus paying for every call. You know, you're going to use the phone differently. But we don't need to re-
Yeah, we don't need to debate that, it's a whole thing here, it's just a number rate.
Okay.
Check your baseball scores.
It's just one ding-ding, I didn't know if it was my to-go order. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I'm against.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the warrant. Article 24 is a petition.
Yes, citizen's petition.
Second.
No, I just made a motion to close the warrant, we don't-
Now, shouldn't we, I mean, given the discussion we have, we have to vote to, I mean, we have to do something that says that Article 24 is part of the warrant.
No, it is.
Automatic.
No, it's not automatic. I mean, it says that we, if we didn't do it, we'd be in trouble, but the statute says that it's under the hand of the Select Board. So, I mean, this is the discussion that we had last year with respect to the Quin Truck. So, I, I guess I would make the motion, Article 24 is part of the warrant.
Let me go backwards, I withdraw my motion to close the warrant.
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion to include Article 24 in the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I make a motion to close the warrant.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? All opposed?
Before we finish up, I just wanted to clarify something, because again, I didn't get it in writing. The, we removed eighty-seven thousand dollars from police capital and operating budget, and we removed thirty-one thousand nine hundred from the fire operating budget.
We removed from the police a vehicle at thirty-six-five.
We transferred from police overtime twenty to the reserve fund.
Okay.
And we reduced the police chief's line item by eleven-nine.
Okay, and the fire, what did we-
The fire, we reduced the overtime, transferred to reserve fund by twenty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And we reduced the chief's line item, salary line item, by six thousand two hundred.
Okay, so it's twenty-six-two from the fire.
Right.
And then, how much did we remove from DPW?
Nine thousand dollars from the general fund DPW salary line items for the director.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The motion to close the warrant, is that vote carried out?
Yep, warrant's closed. Okay, so we got the, we got three more pieces of business. We got the appointment, appointment for the registrar.
I move to appoint Stephen Kennedy as the Democrat, recommendation Democrat Chair of the Longmont Democrat Town Committee, reappoint him to the Board of Registars.
Your second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Only comment is, I think we did have correspondence in, and the Democratic Committee recommended him as their number one, and they did two, two other alternatives, committed basically to improve. So, no, I see no discussion, further discussion, all in favor? Okay. And we're signing, this is assigned to 2015 warrant? We have a bond sale approval?
We have a bond sale approval, I do have a vote that probably should be read by the clerk. That's just a vote.
Yep.
He's the clerk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here's the official one, but, you know, you're going to have to, I move that, so I've worked out of that. You're going to need to sign those.
Ready? I move that the sale of one million five hundred and one thousand two hundred dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2015 bonds of the town of Long, of the town dated March 24, 2015, to Robert W. Baird and Company Incorporated, at the price of one million five hundred forty-six thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars sixty-nine cents, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on March 1st of the years, and in the principal amounts, and bear interest at the rates as shown in the table attached to this document, which shows. Further, the bonds maturing on March 1st, 2025, term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption, redemption, or mature as follows. In 2024, the amount of one hundred twenty thousand dollars, in 2025, the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I further move that in conjunction with the marketing and the sale of bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale, and preliminary official statement dated March 3rd, 2015, and a final official statement dated March 12, 2015, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, being hereby verifiable, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further move that the bonds shall be subject to redemption, at the option of the town, upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement, and move that the town treasurer and the Select Board be, and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking, in compliance with SEC Rule 15(c)(12), in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. I further move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures, in such a form as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures, in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds. And I further move that each member of the Select Board, town clerk and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, and execute the delivery, execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be deemed by us, or any of us, to be necessary or convenienced to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
I think that's it, Mark.
Second.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I missed something, could you reread that, please?
Just, so people understand, this is a formal prescription of a vote, we are actually going out and borrowing money, one-point-five million dollars, plus, actually, one-point-five, one million five hundred and one thousand two hundred dollar general obligation bonds that our town treasurer and her CFO have, have decided, and advised us, are appropriate to do, and this is the consolidation of several current projects, as well as other ongoing, what we call bands, which are bond anticipation notes, short-term borrowings rolled over to longer bond. The reason we do this in this way is to save on borrowing costs, so rather than spend a high percentage of what we borrow along the way to borrow the money, we actually do what's called bond anticipation notes, borrow smaller amounts along the way, when it reaches an appropriate amount of money, we consolidate them all into one bond, and issue them in that time. Is that correct, Mr. Breslinhan?
That's correct. I'll just add, the four projects are the, the four drainage projects, nine hundred forty thousand dollars, they were approved last May, net amount was seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, Edgewood Water Maines of four hundred and forty thousand, Forest Glen Pumping Station, two hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred, and Primrose Water Maines, eighty-one thousand six hundred. We had three bidders, the low bidder came in at a true interest cost of one-point-eight-nine percent for the life of the bond.
Right.
Just have a question. When do we start worrying if interest rates start, is there a trigger point, when the interest rates get up, start going up, that we need to worry about being in the anticipation notes?
I think once we start seeing a larger spike, that we've currently seen, again, I mean, we're, if we went out for a bond anticipation note, in this particular case, we'd be borrowing at maybe point-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
So we still have a pretty good gap of, you know, the longer-term permanent notes versus the bond anticipation notes.
So we'd have to see a huge spike in interest rates?
We'd have to see a movement that's going to take months of time before it catches up to itself.
Thank you.
So in fact, our bond, our, our interest rate we're paying, you said, is just under one-point-nine percent?
Yes.
So this one-point-eight-nine, or something like that?
One-point-eight-nine, the true interest cost, we did have a premium on it, which we'll be paying the issuance cost out of, and in a small amount, we'll go into the general fund.
So just, Paul, just as a question, we have some funds in our treasury that we are investing longer term, what are the interest rates we're getting on?
That we're investing at?
I'm trying to talk, just-
I, I, I think the, the highest amount that we have invested amount, that is not in a CD, but in a money market account, is at one percent.
Okay, so.
Everything else after that, we might have point-six-five, point-five-oh, or some other money market accounts that we have, other than that, it's below that.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And, I just had a quick, the, this document that had been presented, it looked like there were three bidders.
Yes.
And I take it, under state law, we're required to accept the low bidder?
I would see, I would assume the state law is, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I would see no reason why you would not take the low bidder.
Well, I guess what I was asking, I, I've never heard of Robert W. Baird.
They're real.
Okay, all right, I mean, I've heard of Fidelity, I, I mean, so, but, but this is a-
I, I, yeah, I, you know, if they don't give us the money, we'll go probably to the next bidder, but I, you know, there's no reason not to believe that that money's not coming in.
The first thing, a million and a half dollars in a bond issuance is, is very, very small.
Yeah.
And that's why you're seeing a smaller, and there it is, a mini-bond type of firm, and, you know, if this were a fifteen-million-dollar bond, you probably, like a high school bond or something.
Right.
You'd have a lot more activity on there with bigger companies, because this is almost like a private placement in the terms of bond issuance.
Yeah, it's very small in the marketplace.